New protocols, so bear with us. Welcome, everybody, to the Thursday, March 17th, meeting of the Humlett County Planning Commission. And we are still under Zoom rules, so you can join us that way, or you can come down. And we don't have anybody in the House tonight, but you're welcome to come down and join us that way. So with that, I will call the meeting to order, and I will ask everybody to join me in a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Trip, could we get a roll call, please, or a Commissioner's present?
Peggy O'Neil?
Here.
Melanie McCawber?
Here.
Alan Bongio?
Here.
Noah Levy?
Oh.
Here. Mike Newman?
Here.
Tom Mulder?
Actually, there's an extra one down there.
It's Thomas, I'm here.
Okay, Thomas, got it.
We've got to work the mics down this way.
Brian Mitchell?
Present.
We're getting our mics set up, straightened around here, apologize for that. All right, thank you, Trip, we have a full House. All right. Director, do we have any agenda modifications tonight?
We don't have any agenda modifications to recommend. We would bring up that there are a couple of letters for things that are on the consent calendar, and the Commission may want to pull those. One is on the Eubanks Road Project, or Eubanks Farms. The other is related to the Nava Ranch. Both of those are on consent, but there are neighborhood concerns expressed there, and then there's several supplementals for the safe parking shelter crisis ordinance.
I'd like to have the Nava one pulled.
Okay, well, we'll get to that. I'll go through all of them, and we'll have the opportunity to do that, and the public will as well. So, thank you, Director. So with that, we will, I will now go to item D, which is public comment, and this is the time when the public can speak on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. So if anybody would like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda, now is your And I'm not seeing any hands come up. Is there anybody in the audience here? Looks like we have one person interested in speaking on anything? Okay. With that, I will, go ahead, Director.
Chair, it seems like we're not coming across over audio, so maybe the...
We were told to keep ours off. Thank you, sorry about that. Okay, so seeing no public comment, well, I'll ask that again, that's a good point, Mike, did...
I don't think anyone heard on Zoom, only on access from both tables.
Okay, so we're having some communication issues here, so I'm going to re-ask the question, is there anybody that would like to speak on non-agendized items this evening? Seeing no hands coming up, I'm going to close the public comment and come back to the consent agenda, item number E. And so, as usual, I will ask if there's any public that wants to have an item polled, or any Commissioners that want to have an item polled. So the first item on the consent agenda is Crystal Kings Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permits in the Miranda area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item polled?
I do.
And I was going to, if nobody else did, so. All right, so that item will be polled. The second item on consent is the Marcus Land Company Incorporated Conditional Use Permit in the Pilot Ridge area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item polled?
This one's continued, recommended to be continued.
You're right, I'm sorry, I didn't highlight that one, and I usually do. Thank you, Brian. Item number three is Whipso Wassens LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Bloxburg area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item polled? Seeing none, we will leave this item on consent. Brings us to item number four, Eubanks Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the White Thorne area.
I'd like to pull this one.
Okay. That item will be polled. Brings us to item number five, Elders Road LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Alder Point area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item polled? Seeing none, we'll leave this on consent. Brings us to item number six, Nava Ranch Incorporated Special Permit in the Honeydew area. Is there anybody who wishes? I see a hand coming up on public, so this will be polled. All right. And that completes the items that are on consent. So the items that are going to be polled are items number six, item number four, and I believe it was item, sorry, I've got to flip through these pages, and item number one. So those will be polled, and we'll have a public comment on them. So can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items number two, three, and five from the consent calendar.
I will second that. So thank you, we have a motion. Did you get that, Trip? Thank you. All right, roll call vote, please. Got to have a little fun.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Melanie McCawber?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Thank you, Trip, motion carries unanimous. Okay, so that brings us to item F, which is items that are polled, and the first item will be item number one, Crystal Kings Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Miranda area. And we'll take a staff report, please.
Well, he might have missed that. It's too late now, though, we'll just keep going. Sorry.
Don't be afraid to tell me that in the future, I really appreciate your help.
There must have been something that you didn't hit record.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Chair, if you will allow me, okay, there we go.
Okay, all right. Good evening, planning Commissioners. I am bringing, this is for the planning department, for Crystal King Farms LLC Conditional This is for the proposed project, you can't see me, can you?
No, we can see your screen, though.
Okay. Let me see. All right, can you hear me, can you see me now?
Yes, we can see you up in the corner.
Okay, and my presentation?
Yes.
Is there any way of moving that little screen up, so we can see the written screen, or down low, one of the two? Yeah.
All right, is that better?
Yes.
All right. Sorry about that, this is for the Crystal King Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit.
Except, we don't see your screen right now.
All right, forgive me. Still nothing?
Now it is.
Okay. Is that good?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize for all that.
Let's go with...
First off, Crystal King Farms LLC for the Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit. This is for Conditional Use Permit, the proposed project is for Conditional Use Permit to authorize 18,300 square feet of existing mixed light cannabis cultivation. They have 1,830 square feet of ancillary propagation, and as well as 1,830 square feet of propagation is proposed in a separate greenhouse. Special Permit is for development within the streamside management area for continued use and maintenance of a pointed diversion. Drying and curing occurs in existing 2,000-square-foot building, currently processing and packaging occurs off-site. No future onsite processing is anticipated for this project. On this slide is showing the location of the project.
No, I don't know why they're there, why they're here, this is up here.
The site is accessed from a private road shown on this slide via Salmon Creek Road. This slide shows the site plan, cultivation areas are shown in green, water storage shown in blue, and the drying structure is outlined in yellow. The power is provided from 135-kilowatt Whisper Watt generator. The generator and fuel is stored in a 168-square-foot shed. Approximately 200,000 gallons of water is used annually, which equates to about 11.11 gallons per square foot. Water for irrigation is provided by an unnamed Class II tributary of Salmon Creek. Water storage contains 200,000, 500,000 gallons in a series of hard plastic tanks. The project also proposes a gutter rain catchment system to be developed off the 2,000-square-foot barn to reduce the reliance on the pointed diversion. The catchment system will capture up to 70,000 gallons and store it in hard-sided water storage tanks. The installment and operation of the catchment system will reduce the water demand from the point of diversion, point of diversion by a third. This concludes my presentation. The planning department finds that the planning commission has considered the addendum to mitigation negative declaration. Recommend make all the required findings for the conditional use permit and special permit based on the evidence in the report, and adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit and special permit for the Crystal King Farms, subject to conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation. Planning staff is available for questions. The agent is also in attendance tonight, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of staff from the Commission? Yes, Brian, go ahead.
This may be a general-type question, but whenever we say we're permitting so many square feet of existing cultivation, and it's going to be either mixed light or indoor, were they always doing indoor and mixed light, or does that just mean that they had 20,000 square feet of outdoor, potentially, in the past?
Since it's a general question, I'll jump on that. So what we do is, we, when it's existing, we verify that there was cultivation there previously before January 1st of 2016. We verify that there were greenhouses there. We attempt to verify whether or not, in the case where it's mixed light, if there was actually lights in them. That sometimes, in all honesty, is difficult to do.
So I guess my follow-up question would be, if we can verify they did outdoor, but now they're asking to do mixed light, isn't that sort of a mixture of new cultivation and existing? Because the baseline for the EIR, the programmatic EIR, assumed baseline, and that's why pre-existing is getting a certain path, that a brand-new mixed lighter indoor would have to go through further steps. And so I'm just wondering, the appropriateness, or the steps we take to make sure that we really are evaluating against the true baseline?
So, in direct answer to your question, in this particular case, there's 18,300 square feet of existing mixed light. Within our file, there's something called a cultivation area verification that we've done. So we've gone through and identified conclusively that there's 18,300 square feet of greenhouses that absolutely existed onsite prior to 2016.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else who has questions before, for staff? Oh, go ahead, Thomas.
So, reading through this, I'm a little confused, because in the executive summary, if I read it right, it's proposing only one harvest a year, but it's showing, which hopefully the applicant, or the consultant, can help us with that, because I've never seen mixed light operations run for these months with only one harvest a year, so I'm just a little confused on that.
Okay, maybe the applicant, or can...
If I could, one of the things that may, I'm speculating here a little bit, but our ordinance says that mixed light is anything with supplemental lighting. So one of the things that a lot of people do is put low wattage lighting into their greenhouses to extend the vegetation period, and that could explain the one cultivation period, because they used a small amount of artificial light to extend the vegetation
Can I follow up on that? But if they were to do more than one cycle per year, would that need them to change their operations plan, or is that, I just don't want to see the applicant put themselves in somewhere.
Their operations plan should identify the number of runs that they're going to
Melanie?
Yes, I was wondering if someone could tell us what the timeline is for the additional
So frankly, that really needs to be immediate, because right now, they're diverting, they have a pointed diversion right now, and in order to divert currently, they need to forbear. And so that, I didn't have time to catch up on this, and so I'm going to say this, that is probably going to raise more questions, but they should have the storage in place right now.
So, I had the same thought that Melanie had, or I was going to ask that same question, so would it be within our purview to require that that is in place before any cultivation?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, that's what, that's where I thought it was going to go, so, thank you. Anybody else?
The other reason I pulled this one is there was no mention of a plan to get off the generator power, and was wondering what discussions were held around that, if any?
Thank you, I can answer that question. We did speak with the agent for the project regarding the generator use, and it's my understanding that due to distance and lack of neighbors, the PG&E, bringing PG&E to the property is cost prohibitive, that they're scaling down from historic cultivation, where they had a larger generator that supported indoor that they're no longer doing. So the agent did point out there would be a reduction in the quantity of use of the generator, however, no plans to, for renewables or PG&E at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we open this up for public comment? All right, seeing none, I will open up the public comment on this item now, and please raise your hand if you wish to speak. Steven Liu, go ahead.
Hi, this is Steve Liu, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm the agent for the applicant. I wanted to just respond to some of the concerns and questions, and with respect to water storage and harvest, et cetera. The operations plan does indicate two harvests, so it may have just been an error in the project, the summary, that was, the executive summary that was issued. But if you do review through the packet, at least the copy that I received in the mail, it does show the intent to do two harvests, at least with the schedule. The other comment I wanted to make with regards to the water storage and the timeline, I don't believe we're going to be able to make the timeline to cultivate this season. We are still waiting for the water board to issue the formal water right, and the forbearance period starts April 1st, and with the reliance on the surface water diversion, it's, and then plus the processing timeline through the state for the state license, most likely there will be no cultivation this year. So all water storage will be provided prior to the beginning of the operation. Water storage is required during the forbearance period, so there's a pretty tight window. I'm not saying it won't happen this year, but most likely it will not. But water storage will be there prior to the start of the cultivation operation. The other comment that was being made with respect to generator usage, this project, there's a large barn, it's a three-story barn on the property, that structure used to be an indoor operation. This is, this particular project is, to me, it's one of the most evident that there was historic generator usage. There's an existing generator enclosure, as well as a roofed, a diesel tank with a roof over it. There's actual panel, power panels, as well as wiring, and broken-down fans and broken-down lights that are in the greenhouses. This particular site has not been cultivated since, I believe, 2014, but there's significant evidence that there was both an old indoor, as well as lights in those greenhouse structures back in the day. The operator had told me that the, historically, there was 125-kilowatt generator used to power the indoor during the winter seasons, and then during the summer, they would switch to a 75 KW generator to power less, like reduce the number of lights in the barn and run a nursery there, while also powering lights and fans in the greenhouses. The proposed project is to scale the generator usage down to a 35 KW generator. As part of this, we are proposing the 10% accessory nursery area. A portion of that will be in the barn, and about 1,000 square feet of that will be in a nursery greenhouse. This is to reduce the use, to eliminate the need for a higher-capacity generator, because it'll allow the plants to be in a vegetative state, growing up outside and using natural sunlight. I also wanted to point out that a 35 KW generator at, you know, standard 120 volts, is about equivalent to a 200-amp panel. And so, you know, this is not, I understand it is a use of a generator, but it's also a greatly reduced use, and the generator itself is equivalent to a 200-amp panel that you would find in a single-family residence. I just wanted to set that threshold of significance, just to something for people to compare to. You know, we're not talking about 400, 600 amps, tons of lights, it's equivalent to basically a house. And the majority of the use will be to power the drying operations, which are pretty seasonal, and just to have a functional operation there. They're just trying to scale it back to the minimum that's financially feasible, and that they can operate with, and not have to deal with having a large generator there that would require a lot of diesel. We're trying to get it as minimal as possible. I'm available for any further questions.
Okay, thank you, Steven. The Director wants to make a comment.
I don't think this is ripe for the Commission's consideration without a water right, and we would ask that it be continued to a date uncertain.
Okay, does, I mean, the consultant or the applicant have the, do they have to say that they want that to happen, or?
Well, I think it's either that, as I recall, the ordinance says that you've got to have an existing water right.
Okay. Well, I have no problem, because I was having a problem with this one, so I think that that's good to ask them to come back. So would you like, then, us to make a motion to that effect, to continue this to, what, a date uncertain?
With date uncertain, yes, please.
I'd like to move this for date uncertain.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion on, I actually didn't close public comment, so I probably should go back and close public comment, there was nobody other than Steven Liu that had their hand up. So I will close the public comment, and then bring it to the Commission, and we have a motion and a second. And so, Trip, a roll call vote on that.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCawber?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder? Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
And Noah Levy?
Thank you, Trip. Motion carries unanimous, so this will be moved to, and it'll come back to us at a future date. All right, so with that, that takes us on to item, I believe it was, number four, Eubanks Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the White Thorne area, and I'll
Good evening, Chair Bongio and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you is Eubanks Farms LLC. Just a moment here. The project is located at 575 Eubanks Road in White Thorne. The zoning is unclassified, and the land use is identified as residential agriculture. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit for 15,600 square feet of existing outdoor cultivation. Plants would be propagated in a licensed nursery off-site, and drying and processing occur onsite in two sheds totaling 925 square feet. The source of water is a point of diversion on Stossley and Spring, which is located on the adjacent parcel. The applicant anticipates using 162,500 gallons of water, which equates to just over 10 gallons of water per square foot, and water is stored in 28 tanks. And water is stored, uh, in twenty-eight tanks totaling one-hundred-thirty-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty gallons. The project is currently operating on a forty-five kilowatt generator and the applicant has been conditioned to replace the generator with an alternative source of power consistent with prior, uh, projects. The map here shows the location of three, uh, cultivation areas as well as the spring on the adjacent parcel. As I stated earlier, uh, the applicant has been conditioned to replace the generator with an alternative primary power source by January first of twenty-twenty-five. Additional conditions of approval include improving trails, decommissioning crossings, replacing undersized culverts and restoring stream beds, um, per the recommendations of the LSAA and SMP. Uh, there, this California Department of Fish and Wildlife has recommended that noise containment structures, um, be added to the project site and then there are standard conditions, including use of the inadvertent discovery protocol and, uh, access, uh, road, uh, features identified by the Department of Public Works. After analyzing all available documentation for this project, staff has found that the project is consistent with the impacts identified and adequately mitigated in the original mitigated negative declaration. And staff would recommend that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to approve, uh, continued cultivation of outdoor cannabis cultivation at this site. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Alec or staff? Go, Noah, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, is there another project on an adjacent parcel owned by the same owner and another cannabis project that's already permitted?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, um, because I sort of like to know the, the totality of, of what is being permitted in, in conjunction with the existing operation. So, do you have information about that, that previously permitted operation?
I, I don't have that in front of me, but I will work on tracking that down.
Okay, well, I, I have another question that's more particular to this project. You know, this is on the Matol, it's, it's, uh, there's a letter writer who's asserting that, um, Eubanks Creek has been drying up, um, far earlier than it normally does and the Matol is certainly a flow-impacted watershed. And yet, what really jumped out about this one to me, if I was understanding it correctly, is that there, this, uh, project would allow, um, a limited amount of diversion throughout the year. Let me find that place in the, yeah, at the bottom of page four of the staff report. It says, well, it says a couple of things. No more than three-hundred gallons in any one day from all points of diversion combined shall be diverted cumulatively between April first and July fifteenth, which is already later than we would normally see diversion. And then no more than two-hundred gallons shall be diverted in any day from, uh, point of diversion one between July sixteenth and October thirty-first. Uh, now, two-hundred gallons is not a huge amount to divert, but nevertheless, I don't recall seeing another cannabis, um, project that we've permitted that has a, a surface water diversion that is not subject to forbearance. So, I assume, and it seemed like what I was able to gather from this, that this is in compliance with their, um, water right or their, um, LSAA from the Fish and, from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. But nevertheless, does this, um, how, how can that be that they're allowed to divert year-round for this project? And does that comport with the ordinance itself on that front?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Levy. I, I, uh, think I need some time to review, uh, that document and, and I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff before I open it up for public comment? Oh, go ahead, Thomas, I didn't see your hand.
Um, that, what I was, I'm, I'm look forward to the answer about the water, but I was piggybacking, there was a project on the Matol where they had a residence and there was some sort of condition where they, they had the same type of thing. Hope, hopefully that's what, hopefully that's what it is.
Before we go to the public, I had a question. Since it's, uh, taking its water from an adjacent parcel, we've had this issue and this was out in the Matol area, I think it was Honeydew. But is there easements that give them rights to take water from one parcel to the second parcel?
That is a condition that we've been installing and we can add that condition. That'd be part of the commission recommendation to do that. There's a fairly standard condition for that.
I didn't see it in here, that's why I, I asked the question, but, okay. So we'll have to add that to whatever our motion is. Okay. Brian, did you have a question? I wasn't sure, okay. You didn't put your hand up, you had that look. Okay, anybody else before we open this up for public comment?
I just have a question about, um, when you have a, an easement or a water right, I guess it would be, um, and it's historical or you received it before you grew cannabis for probably domestic use? Can you then convert it to, um, cannabis use?
No, it needs to be for, allow for cannabis use.
So in this case, is, is that the case?
In, in this case, I think that's probably one of the things that was being looked at, that Alec is looking at right now, is that it is my speculation that the water withdrawal allowance is for domestic purposes and that they need to, and the ordinance does require that they forbear, uh, for cannabis cultivation.
All right.
That leads me to ask another question, then. Who, if they have one source, would there be some kind of a metering system or something on it? So, there would be control over how much water was used historically and how much is used for the grow now?
In these situations, it is typical to require metering of the cannabis irrigation water and the house water so that we know how much water is being diverted, how much water is being used for cannabis cultivation.
So once again, I didn't see anything on that, so we would have to ask for that to happen.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else before we open this up for public? Okay, I'm now going to open up the public comment, um, and it looks like we have one hand up and I'm assuming this is Praj White, so I'm assuming this must be the, the applicant's, consultant, agent. Um, we have one public, I'll, I'll go to the, the public first, the seven-two-nine-three, and then come back to you, Praj, just so you can kind of wrap it up. So, seven-two-nine-three, go ahead.
Hi, is this the seven-two-nine-three?
Yes.
Hey, hi, my name's Donna Blair, I'm a neighbor, um, to Eubanks Road and, um, in the McKee Creek watershed to the northeast, I believe, of Eubanks Road. So it's difficult for me to prove anything like where a generator is coming, coming from, but I live with the sound of a generator, several generators, twenty-four hours a day. So I would just like it to be known and to, and the thought that they are going to possibly switch to another form of power in, um, twenty-twenty-five means that I get to hear those generators for three more years. So I would, I'm not trying to stop anybody's process, but I would like it to be known that it is, it is really hard to live with. That's, yeah, that's my point. And the other, one more piece, in the description, I don't have any visuals, so I apologize, but it was described as an outdoor cultivation, but I do see that it's one full sun outdoor and eight greenhouses, if that is still correct.
Okay, th, thank you. Um, one of the commissioners would like to ask you a question. I don't usually like to have a back and forth, but go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Speaker.
All right.
Um, our enforcement of the noise ordinance, um, talks about how loud it is from the property line. So, I'm wondering where you're, um, telling us you're hearing it. Is it from in your house? Is it at the fence? And if it is at your house?
It is.
How far away is that from the property line? Thank you.
Yeah, um, whose property line? The, theirs? Or mine?
Well.
It fills, it fills the watershed. So the McKee Creek drainage, it fills that drainage. So, um, and it could be, you know, it's just that I'm in a bit of a hollow here or draw and it comes from Eubanks Road over here. So it is constant and certain times of day and certain weather, it's louder, water carries. But no, it, there's no one point. It is, it is constant. So I could hear it on a quiet, you know, quiet in the night, I can hear it on my decks. I had guests here last week and they said, "What the heck is that sound?" I said, "Yeah, that's, that's become part of living here." So I understand there are lots of details and I cannot prove whose generator it is. I just needed to say it to somebody because it's very difficult to get it to change and I could go to their, you know, I could go to their five-seven-five Eubanks Road and ask them, but that doesn't seem, uh, the way that it's done.
All right, your time is up now, Speaker, so thank you. Appreciate, appreciate you answering, Commissioner. We'll come back, Thomas, let's let the public speak and then we'll, did you have a specific?
Specific to generator noise on permitted cultivation areas, yes.
But not anything that you want to talk to this lady or?
I mean, I could, I, I believe all projects are conditioned to be at fifty decibels at a hundred feet or the tree line. And if that's correct, I just wanted to reiterate that that's something I've seen staff do on-site visits.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you, through the chair. I just thought I would add that the ordinance actually does say that generators shall not be audible to humans in residences. So generators from, that are serving cultivation shall not be audible at residences.
Okay.
On adjoining, adjoining properties.
So who is going to go out and find out if this generator is coming from this site? And that's, I guess, the million-dollar question. Director, do you want to touch that? I mean, it just seems like the elephant in the room.
So it, it sounds like we need to do two things. Number one is to go out and verify that, uh, this generator for the next three years is not going to be a noise nuisance, um, to adjoining property owners. Um, I heard, um, a neighbor say that, um, she's not sure where the noise is coming from. So part of what we need to do on that site visit is try to discern where the actual violation is and, and then appropriately, um, engage with that property owner to rectify the situation.
All right, so with that, I mean, we're still on public comment, but I'm assuming that means that you're going to want to continue this one like we did the last one to go out and do these things.
So I would offer a couple of options for the commission. One, since it's not completely known whether or not it's this site or not, you could condish, you could continue this to see if we could determine that. Or you could also, uh, give direction to staff through the form of a condition that, uh, the staff go out and discern the location of the noise and if it is this site, to, uh, have the applicant modify their generator enclosure such that it's not audible to adjacent residences. And as part of that, um, we would accept the responsibility of recognizing that there is the need to determine if there's other generators operating in the area that are the source of the noise problem, that we would address those in the same way.
Okay, Melanie, go ahead.
For this inspection, if you go out in the generator, for example, maybe isn't running, would you do a test where you would ask the applicant to turn it on?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're still on, uh, public, so I would ask, the next caller is seven-four-two-nine. Star six to unmute.
Hi, this is Robi Tenorio. Uh, this, this item was on the consent agenda, just like the last item. And, um, I'm wondering why these items are being put on the consent agenda when they're not ready to go. And one of the problems with this process of, um, this permitting process with this fable of existing is that we are under this generator noise problem all over. Donna is suffering, um, constantly. The whole community is suffering from generators running and it's being allowed. You're permitting them on a regular basis and it is hard to live with. And we can't, as, as neighbors, be accosting our neighbors and trying to get in the way of them, uh, and their business. And it's really setting up things in a very unfortunate and unfair way for the community. That's, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. So there's one last hand up and that's Praj White and I believe he's the consultant on this, so go ahead, Praj.
Good evening, Chair Bondio, can you hear me?
Yes.
And to the commission and staff, good evening. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak here. Um, just a quick summary of the project. This is an existing cultivation. Um, there is no onsite nursery or propagation using lights for the production of clones or plants. All plants are purchased from an offsite nursery and cultivated outdoor using light deprivation techniques with no lights. All processing is conducted offsite. They do dry and cure on-site. Um, the generator that is described is actually the power supply to the domestic use in the home at the site. And in the operations plan, it is described that the generator is only used for cannabis operations during the drying cycle for the two harvests from the light deprivation. I believe we identified July and October, um, within the operations plan and the applicant is committed to using no more than four hours of power per day for that drying operation as documented in the, uh, staff report and the operational plan. Coming back a little bit to answer Noah's question, the adjacent parcel, um, to the west, I believe, is owned by the same applicant and they have a five-thousand-square-foot application. I do not believe that's approved at this time, but there is a, it is a five-thousand-square-foot existing cultivation making its way through the permitting process. Wanted to make sure, just iterating that generator is, uh, oh, the water, I wanted to touch in on the water you brought up. It's absolutely true, this site has a S, an SIUR, which is a cannabis water right that gives them the right to store water from their point of diversion. The small amount of water use that, uh, you identified, the three-hundred gallons per day, is within the lake and stream bed alteration agreement and that is the limit for all domestic use on the property. So there will be zero diversion outside of, or during the forbearance period for cannabis is a hundred percent domestic use. I did want to touch in on a couple of items. Uh, with regards to meters, the State Water Resource Control Board that governs this water right and CDFW as jurisdiction of the diversion point, though both agencies require meters throughout the project and require reporting stating how much domestic use and how much cannabis was used and they want to know when the water was diverted and then when the water was used. I did note, too, that there's not a condition about the easement. The property to the east, where the point of diversion comes from, is also owned by another family member. You know, this is Joe Staslin and there's Staslin Creek in that area, so it's a longtime family that lives in this area and they do care about their community. So, I do think that a condition of, adding a condition regarding requiring an easement get recorded to the adjacent property is absolutely appropriate. I believe that I, there's a little bit of confusion that I see in the staff report that I want to bring up regarding. that I want to bring up regarding water storage. And I noted the water use and the water storage, there's a gap there of about 31,650 gallons. And, um, I believe that that condition would be, should be added to require, it, it may actually already be in this application, has been in the process for a while, and the applicant has been building towards compliance. I believe there may be that storage already, but we spoke with them, and they would be willing to close that gap and bring in the additional 31,650 gallons of storage. Let's see. Also, I, I wanted to touch in on the two conditions of approval and ask the commission for consideration. Um, one, the condition number eight speaks to a bathroom, and this site has a domestic residence on it and a bathroom there, and most operations are able to satisfy that requirement when they're only cultivating and drying with no commercial nursery, no processing, that a porta potty would be a viable option for that. Or maybe the intent is to require permitting of the domestic treatment system on-site. I'd like clarity on that. And when it comes to the power, the 45 KW generator, really, there is solar arrays on-site that are used for mixing, uh, nutrients and water, um, and being able to use the small pumps to move things around. So, there's really very little power use during the standard operation. The generator is in a nice generator shed and all closed up. I really think that limiting and removing them from that power use when they already have solar, this is a 1.0 project, and the lim, they've already committed to using the generator for cannabis for only four hours a day during the drying cycles following their two harvests. So, I'd like to ask the commission, maybe they could relax the power requirement and allow the generator to continue based on the very small usage on-site. And I really highly doubt that this property is the one causing the noise issues in the neighborhood. However, knowing the applicant would be happy to make sure that we have the generator on and come have an added condition approval that states, "Let's go measure the noise of the generator at all the property lines, and let's make sure," and habitat lines as required by the rules, 100 feet from, it's either 100 feet from the generator or habitat line or property line, whichever is closer. And so, I would ask that you would have consideration for the applicant and give them a chance to show that they're actually working hard to be a good actor and a good neighbor. I hope that answered all the questions. If there are any more questions, I am here to answer them. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Praj. Are there any questions? Go ahead, Melanie.
Yes, thank you. Uh, you mentioned that you don't currently have a water easement, but that because it's a family member, you could get one? Do, did I understand that correctly?
I do not believe there is an easement across through the historic point of diversion that was originally used for the residence and then became a, a cannabis water right and have the storage. So, um, I'm saying it, it is very possible that one family member sends to the other that easement. And I was asking that that condition of approval should be added, and they should document that and turn in the reported easement.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Noah?
Uh, thank you, Praj. That was extremely helpful. I just wanted to follow up and underscore or make sure I heard correctly two points related to water. One is, you said that the limited amount of diversion, um, after May, uh, according to the staff report, is, that is limited to the water use for the domestic residence? Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct, and that is exactly how Department of Fish and Wildlife wrote the condition.
Right. Okay, thank you. And then the other one, uh, you raised a point that I was also going to ask you about, but I think you've answered it. I just want to underscore that you said that there is a gap of about 30 or 31,000 gallons, less storage than anticipated water use. And you said that, um, the applicant is committing to closing that gap, and that therefore we could add a condition that would require them to add that additional amount of storage to match their water use? Is that correct?
That's exactly what I said. You're correct.
Thanks. That was very helpful. That's all I got.
All right. Anybody else? Go ahead, Brian.
I was hoping the Director could clarify condition number eight as it related to the question posed by the last speaker. Thank you.
I think the, uh, what we're addressing there through the chair, pardon me, is that condition eight, I anticipate, was recommended by Department of Environmental Health. And in a lot of the older 1.0 applications, uh, we were looking at bringing everything into compliance. The applicant is correct that if they're not doing any processing, if they're not having a nursery, if they're not doing any distribution on-site, there is not a need for a, um, accessible bathroom. And so, they would not need to permit the, uh, septic system.
So, we can strike number eight, then?
Correct.
And that is A8? Is that correct?
That is condition number eight, yes.
And attachment one? Thank you.
All right. Is there any other questions for Praj so that I can close the public comment section this and bring it back to the commission? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission. So, is there any questions for staff or? Okay?
You can. I, I have a question.
I usually let everybody else, and then I, I have a question.
So, on the generator hours, one of the things that was said is you can have somebody check that out. I don't know how to say this in a nice way. I have reservations on whether the county has the wherewithal, the manpower to do it. I'm not picking on staff, but I know with other issues, not with generators per se, they aren't policing things that are going on out there. Okay? And so, I have concerns that this is just going to be another thing that gets overlooked. We approve it, the project goes on, the gen, who knows how many hours the generator is being, I'm not saying that the, the applicant is going to do it more than four hours. I'm saying if we put a condition like that on, how do we know that it's being followed through? I, I, it's...
To answer your question, I would say that, uh, one of the things that you could do is put a time limit on it, like prior to the cultivation season. The applicant shall schedule an inspection with the Planning and Building Department to come out and test the noise, measure the noise coming from the generator, and determine whether or not it is in compliance with the ordinance. No cultivation may begin until it has been demonstrated that the noise from the generator is in compliance with the ordinance.
Okay. That takes care of about half the equation, but the, the rest is how many hours a day they're doing it. And if they say that they're only supposed to use it four hours, and who's going to be, is there going to, is there going to be an hour meter that's monitored on a yearly basis? Six months? I, I don't know. I, I'm just asking.
You?
Because things have been falling through the cracks. I'm, you know what my issue is, you know, and it's, they're still on, the light, and I'm talking about night skies. So, um, I just feel that, that the county, and I, maybe it's that you need to have more staff. I don't know what the, what the answer is, but I feel it's, it's, um, if we ask to have something done, we shouldn't be approving things unless we know that those are going to get followed up, I guess, is a, I'm just going to go to the point. I'm not picking on staff. I know you guys have a lot on your plate. I just, is there something we could do to help that or something so that it's getting followed through?
Sure. No, I appreciate that. Uh, one of the things we are doing, uh, we are making some internal organizational changes, and we are allocating more staff to do the post-approval monitoring. So, that is something we're doing this year. We are also dispatching code enforcement to address the, uh, uncovered greenhouses that are mixed light, that, uh, the glowworms, so to speak. And, and so, we are going to be proactively enforcing that this year. In fact, we met on that today. I, I think we're doubl, I'll just say this, we're doubling the size of our post-approval monitoring team. We could always use more, uh, but frankly, space and, and expense are, are two constraints we have. I think that relative to this site, one of the important things is, uh, context. And I believe that there's probably other cultivation sites that possibly use generators that are closer to this site or closer to the neighbor site than this site is. So, unfortunately, this site may be getting caught up in somebody else's, uh, behavior.
And I will say, I wasn't going after this site. I was just more of a general, um, that if we're going to put conditions on, I, it wasn't necessarily about this, this particular applicant, applicant or application. I, I'm just speaking in a bigger context of the, the bigger picture. I, I just see this as becoming the problem that I saw at the beginning of the, when the ordinance was created, and it's coming to fruition, and that's that there is, there isn't the follow-up that needs to be happening. And they get through the process, and then it's game on. We're going to do what, what we want. And who's going to question it? Yeah, that's where I'm, I'm having a problem with it. So, um, I want to, I, did I close public? Yeah, I did, okay. So, I just want to make sure, because Praj was still out there. Thomas, go ahead.
So, a couple of things, and I thi, I might have heard the presentation incorrectly. I believe I heard that the generator was also utilized for the house. So, they were trying to give four hours a day towards the cultivation? This is just for staff, are there? If that generator was only used for a household, would there be any restrictions that the county had any obligations to put on, being as it's a 45 KW?
We have no limitations on the use of the generator for, generator for the house.
Okay. And then the second thing I did, I pulled up Landglide because the generator noise was a concern for me, and it, it, according to Landglide, it looks about three-quarters, this site looks to be about three-quarters of a mile away from the person that called in. So, I think this site is unfairly being targeted. Like, it could be wrong, but I do support, you know, to, so that way the applicant isn't inappropriately targeted. I think that is a good, good condition to go out there and, you know, staff. So, I do support that. But I just wanted to note that, that I did look up.
Melanie, you had your hand up.
I have a question for the Director. Have, uh, you looked into any sort of remote monitoring of appliances? So, for example, in Europe, it's becoming quite common. It's not that difficult to, to set up, and because they are exclusive to business and not homes, uh, there wouldn't be the, the privacy issue, because they do have to follow these regulations and comply with a certain number of hours or a certain number of kilowatts. And that would apply to both generators and lights, uh, between certain hours.
We have not looked into that, but we can.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Brian.
I'm ready to make a motion if there are no further questions. Okay. I move that we find that the cannabis, or the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted MITNAG deck for the Commercial Medical Land Use Ordinance as described by section 15164 of the State Secret Guidelines. Make the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit, and approve the U-Banks Farm LLC conditional use permit and special permit as recommended by staff. Subject to mech, recommended conditions with the following five additional conditions, three additional findings, one removed condition, and one clarification. I'll start with the additional findings. Uh, we find that noise pollution, um, is, uh, harmful to the public health and welfare. We find that CO2, uh, emissions are leading to climate change and need to be addressed. And three, we find that it's important for us to be able to have certainty with regards to the amount of water use and the rights, uh, of users of water, that they do have the right to take it. Okay, so the additional conditions are, one, that prior to cultivation, the applicant schedules a, uh, staff meeting to investigate the source of the noise. Two, that they get an easement memorializing their ability to pull water from the adjacent parcel. Three, that they install, uh, water usage monitors that include the use by, if there's one point of diversion, but it's going to multiple parcels, that the monitors measure how much is going to each parcel. Three, um, we include a check of the number of hours on the generator as part of the annual inspection, and we add the additional 30 to 31,000, um, gallons of water storage. I would strike condition number eight and clarify that we make no change to the January 1st, uh, date by which, uh, the generators will no longer be used for cultivation activities.
Brian, could you add A8? A as in atom, eight, because there's B8?
Sure. I intended that to be condition A8.
Thank you.
And could we stipulate that the noise would be, uh, the generator would be turned on and the noise measured at 100 feet and 600 feet?
That's acceptable.
Director?
Just for clarification, I assume when you're asking for, uh, checking the hours of the generator usage, that that's also requiring that the generator have a, a run meter on it so that, uh, the hours can be recorded?
That's implied, but yes. I, I intended that language as well. Thank you.
For clarification, if that's the same generator that's being utilized as the household, is the way I understood it, so do they need a sec, separate logbook for when those hours are utilized for the household for county staff? Or what's the commission asking for there?
I was simply replying to, uh, Mr. White's comments that the generator would only be run four hours for, um, drying and, um, those purposes. So, uh, it sounded like to me it would either be a separate generator or a separate usage of the generator that they could log.
Separate generator.
I don't know how you'd separ, I mean, how, who, who's going to police what hours were used at the house and which hours were used at the grow? I, I, I think this is getting crazy. It would seem that you'd have to have a separate generator, and no house needs a 45K generator. I, I, I can't even buy into that. So, I mean, any house can be run by a five to a 7,000 K, or watt generator, not kilowatt. So, um, it, it would seem to me the logical thing is, is the house has to be separated from the, the commercial use that is the, the cannabis grow. So, I, that would make the most sense to me that we say they're separate. It has to be, the house has to be on a separate generator, and it should be a small generator. I mean, there's no need for that kind of kilowatt.
I agree with that.
Go ahead, Thomas.
Well, we did get testimony earlier that a, you know, 35KW generator is, uh, similar to a 200 amp service, which, you know, if you have multiple appliances going to the same time in a regular household. So, I mean, we could go down the household generator use argument and get laughed at as we did last meeting, or we could, you know, make the appropriate conditions and move forward.
We could, but I think most of us have been around long enough to know that a much smaller generator than that will run a house. I, I, I don't want to get into the weeds, but I've never seen any house that's being run by a 45 kilowatt generator just by a 45 kilowatt generator just to the house. The backup generators that we install on houses all the time are usually in the 7 to 10 watt, 7, 10,000 watt range. So I mean, we're talking a different level. We're talking an industrial generator here. We're talking, you know, to run anything at a house, water pumps, whatever, a very much smaller generator would do the job. Go ahead, Mike.
Thanks, Chair. That just brings to mind something that, as a layperson, I know nothing about amps and amperage and usual use, but you're comparing temporary generator use with an electrified house for a short period of time for that smaller amount. So I'm just thinking, I don't know why we're going into that right now. That's just kind of getting off the subject, I believe.
Go ahead, Melanie.
Well, I would like to concur with the chair and say that, you know, we could have a debate on this, but I think that what would be sensible at this point is to ask that the generator for cultivation be separate from the generator that is for the house.
That would make sense to me as well. Go ahead, Thomas.
So if the generators, if you needed a separate generator for your cultivation and your house, so you're going to ask someone to build another generator shed that's soundproofed and fire resistant, to tear it back down in four or five years with the condition to remove the generator is what I'm hearing. And I just would, it'd be good for clarification.
I guess you could look at it that way, but they're two different kinds of uses. The house is one use and the cultivation is a commercial use. So if you were doing a project that was, I'm going to use that term, the real world, not in cannabis world, you would have different meters for the commercial project, and you would have different regulations with PG&E or the power company for that project, you know, for the commercial side of it and for the residential side. I can tell you that because I'm doing one right now. I'm doing an office building with a residence for the caretaker on the site above, and it's a split service. One is for the commercial side of it, one is for the, with separate, they don't connect at all. They have, and so it is different. And I understand that this is out on a piece of property, but if we're going to, you know, the industry said that they wanted this to happen, that they were going to become a commercial business and that this is what it was going to happen. That's what happens in the real world. You have to separate the two out. So I think it's the logical conclusion to solve the problem on this one, to have separate generators. I wish there was no generators, but the reality is there has to be generators. And if I lived out there, I'd have a backup generator, but, and I have two of them at my own house, okay? One's 7,500 watts and one's 5,000 watts, and I can run a 3,000 square foot house on a 5,000 watt generator and run everything. So I under, I can see your point. It is an extra cost, but there's always a cost that goes with doing business. I don't get to choose the conditions when I do a project on a house. They tell me what I'm going to do. Okay? I don't always like it, but that's the reality.
I understand. I was just trying to make sure it was clear for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? So I believe we had a motion, but I don't believe we had a s--
Did you add that to the motion?
Yeah, I indicated I was amendable to both of those changes.
I second the addition of those changes.
All right. Any further discussion?
Could I get Brian to repeat the conditions? There were quite a few of them, sorry.
I'd be happy to. Okay. So you need the additional findings and the additional conditions or just the conditions? Okay. Number one, that prior to the beginning of cultivation, that the applicant schedules an appointment or a site visit with planning staff to ensure that the noise complaints or the noise levels that we've heard about in public testimony are not coming from the subject parcel. Number two, that they obtain an easement that puts in place their right to take water off an adjacent parcel. Three, that a water usage monitor specific to this site be put in place. Four, that during the annual site inspection, planning staff reviews the hour meter to ensure that four hours a day, as they're stating, is the average use of the commercial generator. And number five was adding the 30,000 to 31,000 gallons of additional water storage mentioned by the project propellant, or the project representative, that we strike condition A8, and that we make no change to the requirement to wean off the generators by the date indicated in the condition of the staff report. And then the additional two were that the commercial and residential generators would be separated and--
Hours.
I mentioned the hour meters as part of the annual check. So I think I got it.
Just a question for the motion maker and the seconder. Is it okay if we convert these into some of the conditions we've used before that are fairly standard in these circumstances?
Yes, as long as the findings that I listed out support each of those. If you feel there's some missing, I could add findings. But do you, do you hear any missing findings that need to be made in order to make these changes?
No, this is very thorough and gives us good direction, and there's plenty here for us to amend the findings and to modify the conditions as you have made the motion.
All right.
And I will second that. And just a reminder that for the measurement of the noise, it was going to be a, you have that? Okay. Right.
All right.
That's great. Thank you.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Oh, Mike, go ahead.
Just a question to make sure that I'm understanding what we're doing here. So we're adding a second generator on that will be monitored for hours, and the home generator is not monitored for hours. Is that correct? Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions? All right. See and none. Trip, a roll call vote, please.
Mike Newman? Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
No.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Melanie McCawver?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Thank you, Trip. Motion carries six to one. All right. Usually we take a break about now, so before we get started on the next item, I will. Thomas, you have your hand.
Do you guys etiquette, want your no votes, is that what your etiquette for no votes, explaining them, or is that not etiquette that you want them?
You don't have to. If you wish to, you--
Great project conditions, I don't support. That's what the reason for no.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll take a five-minute break and then we'll be back.
Recording stopped.
All right. Welcome back, everybody. That brings us to item number six, which is the Nava Ranch Incorporated Special Permit in the Honeydew area. And take a staff report, please. I don't know. Who has this one?
While we're waiting for the planner to come online, Augustus, if you're out there, I would just bring up that we did receive a rather lengthy letter that raises some pretty significant concerns. And in all honesty, we got it at 4:57 and have not had a chance to really verify or refute many of the claims in this letter. And so we actually do feel a little bit uncomfortable trying to put the commission in a place of not having the opportunity to really look at this.
Would you like us, are you, is that your way of asking us to continue this to a future date or to a date uncertain?
Well, it--
Kind of what it sounds like.
It may be good to open the public hearing because I think this was pulled off of consent by a member of the public and hear what the concerns are from the public. You've got the letter, and then it gives us a chance to hear what needs to be looked at, then we can go and evaluate this.
It maybe brings up a bigger question that we should probably start having a deadline that we truly honor about getting things so that we get them in a timely manner. It used to be that way, and it seems like now we allow that to go right up to the meeting. And it's, it seems unfair to staff as well as unfair to the commission to get things that late. So that's maybe a discussion for another, another time.
Well, just, just for the record, this one was submitted yesterday at 3:13. So according to the email we got this morning, but still, that's pretty close to the deadline.
So if I could interject, I apologize. Apparently on Zoom, nobody is hearing what's happening.
I don't know about that. I, it's all your fault, Trip.
Absolutely.
Sorry. Okay. Are, we here and now, you got it? Okay. Good.
I hear I'm up.
Okay. Augustus, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Augustus. I'll be presenting on the Nava Ranch Special Permit today. It's going to be for expansion of a mixed light cannabis cultivation project, and it is under Special Permit number 17162 on APN 107106006 on, at 844 Wilder Ridge Road in the Honeydew area. Presently, the cultivation area consists of 6,600 square feet of outdoor, 2,500 square feet of mixed light, and 2,500 square feet of indoor. The mixed light is going to be expanding to one acre, and that will remove the outdoor as well, but the indoor cultivation area is not going to be affected. This will represent a total increase of 36,960 square feet of cultivation area and an increase in intensity of use. Drying, trimming, and processing will occur on-site in the existing storing, processing, and packaging building. All the water will be sourced by rainwater catchment in proposed, existing, in a proposed pond, an existing pond, and as well as the rainwater catchment system that is on the roofs of the structures. The total storage will end up being over 1 million of rainwater catchment ponds, as well as 60,000 gallons of water tanks, which would total up to 1,110,000 gallons overall. And they'll be, it has been estimated that the water requirement for the project is going to be 315,000 gallons per year, which would equate to 6.83 gallons per square foot per year. And the energy source is PG&E as well as a six-panel solar array, but the solar array is also proposed to be expanded in the coming years. Some key details about this project, it is within the setback of Kings Range National Conservation Area, but in the previous project, application number 12657, setback reduction was issued to reduce that to 100 feet. So that should not provide further hindrance to the project. And this project is technically going to result in over one acre of cultivation, which is why the project is being brought forward to you instead of just the zoning administrator. But this is also all right because the indoor and mixed light cultivation areas are separated by the code and are also separate, going to be separately approved. The indoor has already been approved. For the aerials, the site is accessed by Landergan Road, which is a county-maintained paved road, and Smith-Eda Road, which is a Bureau of Land Management-maintained dirt road, which goes through the Kings Range National Conservation Area. There is some public concern about year-round access via Smith-Eda Road, but no gates are proposed aside from the existing gate on the private driveway between Landergan Road and Smith-Eda Road. So that should, that access should not be affected. And there were two public comments received as well this afternoon, which may have reached you all. Staff recommends that the project be approved and all findings are made, let me, specific phrasing, make all the required findings for approval of the special permit and adopt the resolution approving the application subject to the recommended conditions. And that will conclude my presentation, and I will be available if any further information is required.
Thank you, Augustus. Any questions for Augustus? I have one. The fact that the road is, I guess, under BLM jurisdiction, is there any issue with that and the transportation of cannabis across it? I know we've had this discussion about Forest Service roads. I don't know if we've ever discussed BLM roads. I'm assuming it's a federal agency, so it's the same thing, but just a question.
It is the same circumstance. Chair Bongio, in that situation, the property has access, but it is obviously still not federally legal to transport cannabis. And transporting cannabis on federal property could result in arrest.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other questions before, go ahead?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I think I understood this, but I just wanted to make clear that there is an existing PG&E hookup on the property and that it would cover the additional power demands of this project. Is that correct? I guess that's a question for the planner.
Yes, the PG&E hookup is existing. Whether it sufficiently provides enough energy for the increase in intensity of use is a question that I would defer to the applicant, and I believe their agent is present for this.
Okay, yeah, both the amount and the location of power service. I just had that question, it was a little ambiguous in the staff report, and I guess it was raised by one of the comments in the letter. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Melanie.
I see that there's only one full-time employee. Did you have an updated number on how many part-time employees there would be on average over the cultivation season?
The only number I'm aware of is three seasonal employees. So that would be a total of four employees.
You don't have hours associated with those?
I can look into that, but I don't believe so. Give me a moment.
All right, maybe the applicant will be able to answer that as well. Any other questions for staff, and then we'll go to public and the applicant. Okay, seeing none, I will open the public comment on this. And I'd ask the applicant to wait and answer last, or the consultant. So the first caller is 7429. Star six.
Hi, good evening, this is Robie Tenorio. This project wasn't going to the zoning administrator, but it was on the consent agenda. And I have to say that expansion of, at this, of this size, considering climate change, expanding and converting to, outdoor to mixed light doesn't seem very future-oriented. The water, 315,000 gallons annually to water one acre, that doesn't really compute at 6.83 gallons a square foot. That is 297,514.8. And the project says it's going to have three harvests, so that's almost 900,000 gallons, so that's not accurate. The energy plan, it says that power from PG&E will be sourced through the green energy programs as feasible. The CCLUO says it should be exclusively renewable, and of course, you should ask for proof from PG&E that they would be able to provide to the proposed expansion. CalFire says on page 81 that you can look at that they cannot support the plan because no timber conversion, the finding in the plan says that there was no timber conversion, but CalFire cannot support the plan because of the cutting. They, employees, one person, will be hand-watering an acre. They say that's what they'll be doing, they're not using drips, they'll be hand-watering. So one person will be hand-watering an acre. Although three harvests are planned, they state they will need to have an additional two to three employees for spring planting and fall harvesting. That doesn't make much sense since it's, they're already saying they're doing three harvests. Also, it states that eventually there will not be more than five cycles. I don't know where that was analyzed. On the road, the road was not analyzed for, was, was analyzed for the so-called existing in 2018, not the added 31,000 or 36,000 square feet. There's, those, both numbers are in the plan. Also, it's interesting that the report that the engineer did on the, how stable the land is, I understand it's flat there, but below it is the Wilder Ridge Road, which went out completely, and there's a detour there now. It's not repairable because it's right above Honeydew Creek. There's, there just seems to be quite a few issues with this plan. I would say that you would absolutely need to condition it, have in place the water storage ability and the stored water, because this is proposed development and proposed storage. It's not in place to get in there and grow an acre of mixed light. And whether it's three times, three harvests or five harvests, we don't, we don't know. And the water is
You have to wrap it up.
Not accurate. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Catalina.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, great. Hey, I wish I could be there in person, I didn't want to risk my health. I am incredibly upset. I have lived on Honeydew Creek, half-mile-as-the-crow-flies away from this new neighbor, Nava Ranch. I don't think anyone in Humboldt County knows Honeydew Creek the way I do. I look out my kitchen window, I spend my lifetime there. It is beautiful, it is pristine, and I am incredibly heartbroken and stressed out over the sound of the generator that is constant, and I can hear it over the sound of the creek. This is a huge creek, one of the five main creeks that feed the Matol River. It is, and when it's raining, it's even louder. And I can hear it over the creek and over the sound of the tree frogs, which are incredibly loud. You can't even sleep with the tree frogs. The generator runs at all kinds of hours, which it's not allowed to run at all. I know when the power's out, I'm on the grid. The lights from the greenhouses, I sent you pictures, you can see them from inside my living room. I live in an old cabin that was built there many, many years ago, and it has destroyed everything serene and beautiful about my property, my children's property, my neighbor's property. The report, I hate to say it, is obscene, okay? I talked to the BLM, the Honeydew Fire Department, and the Bureau of Land Management, and their only really similar comments were, there's no enforcement out there. We wish you luck. No one comes out to check on any of this. As for the staff report, rain catchment, you have to have 10,000 square feet of rain catchment of surface area, and you have to have 100 inches of rain in order to collect what they're claiming. There is no rain out there anymore. Drying, trimming, processing, storing in a 900-square-foot building, which Augustus failed to mention? One full-time employee putting in fertilizer by hand, watering by hand? Watering that by hand would take 48 hours. Last time I checked, there are not 48 hours in one day. Three seasonal employees to run this place? I, I don't know how this was even passed. Like, I, I am so stressed out and heartbroken that this is even allowed to waste my time? 82 pages of this. Fire safety? They didn't even call 911 when they had a five-acre grass fire on that property. No one called 911. Someone saw it from the Honeydew porch and called the fire department. There is no PG&E capable to get up that hill. It's down by the tiny little house by their gate. And as far as green energy with PG&E, green energy program, there's no such thing. You are buying credits of an existing windmill, maybe down in Fresno somewhere, but there's nothing green about it up here in Humboldt County. And PG&E is two to four years out, by the way. Anyway, I totally agree and thank Robie, the woman who spoke. And I would also like to say that we were not allowed to prepare for this, it was five more than
You have to wrap it up, your time is up.
Yeah, okay, I am begging you to not sign below this line, the cultivation of 43,560 square feet of new mixed light commercial cannabis and the conditions under which it may be operated or maintained. This is not fair. Will not
Thank you. Trying to be fair to everybody. There's a big sign up there that says how much time you have, so. Okay. Okay, I will start, I will start saying when there's 30 seconds left again, as I was before. I just was told that you're not hearing the warning, I apologize for that. We're trying to get this new system down, so, go ahead, Brian.
So if this were just a, like a permitting Okay, I apologize, I retract.
Yeah, there's, okay, well, we got public still on, but we'll, we will get a talk. So the next public would be 7108.
Hi, this is Bonnie Blackberry. And one thing that I noticed on here is they had with this acre of mixed light, 5,000 gallons for fire. And I think that's not appropriate for something this size. And the whole thing with the generators, the noise travels a long, long way. It isn't just in the neighboring parcel. I live in an area in a watershed where it's a long, long way away. The generators are echoing. And I hope that the county will do some kind of monitoring and deal with it, because it kind of drives people crazy, having the generator buzzing away all the time. Yeah, and I did have a concern about the ability to get PG&E for this project, run all that. And you have seasonal workers. Well, if you have, you know, three sites, what is seasonal? Seems like a seasonal harvest, or you need seasonal workers for planting. It's just a cover of all kinds of term, but I think there needs to be more specific when it comes to that. And then also, on finding seven, it talked about the 15% slope that they needed to grade to make it, to turn it back to that from a previous historic cultivation or something. I'm wondering if they get to grow on that, or it's graded back to what it should be. Yeah, so this plan sounds like it needs to go back to the drawing board.
30 seconds. Okay, thank you. Next caller is Praj White.
Good evening, Commissioner Bonjo, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. First question, I am here to read into the record a letter that was prepared by Gary Haga and Ladonna Landergan Haga on the adjacent property. I wanted to make sure when you guys all received that letter. Did you get that supplemental, it came in late this afternoon?
No. I believe it's in this pack, I didn't get to read it, I'll be honest, but
Okay, well, I'm going to try to read this really quickly, I know I got three minutes, so here goes.
Go ahead, we'll give you extra time as a consultant.
All right, so this letter is from concerned neighbors regarding Nava Ranch, special permit application. Dear planning commissioners, we, Gary Haga and Ladonna Landergan Haga of Honeydew Creek Original Family Farms, are Honeydew residents adjacent to the proposed Nava Ranch project. We have lived here for decades, and our family has been on this property for more than 100 years. We support cannabis farmers and our cultivators ourselves. We have gone through the difficult permit processing. However, we oppose, we oppose this project because the applicant is an irresponsible operator with a project that is already out of compliance, and they should not be allowed to expand their operation nearly five-fold. The operation is not in compliance with the approved special permit. They currently cause light, noise, pollution, run a loud generator, and are never covering their greenhouses. We see lights every night from our living room and hear their generator from our back porch. If the existing project emits noise and light that impacts our neighborhood and wildlife, why should they be allowed to expand nearly 500%? Additionally, information is inaccurate or missing from the application materials. There is no evidence to support the source of power for this massive mixed light project, and it is impossible that one full-time employee could operate a project of this size. Water use volumes are suspiciously low, no noise study was conducted to prevent noise impacts. Additionally, no biological or botanical reports were made available for the public review prior to the hearing. Icarers, hunters, and tourists recreating in the Kings Range wilderness drive directly through the proposed project on Smith-Eda Road to access trails and campsites. The existing greenhouses are visible from the road. Do you think, do you, the planning commission, want visitors to encounter an environmentally irresponsible operation when they are going out to enjoy the natural beauty of the Matol Valley? Lastly, we received the notice that the project would be heard on Thursday, March 24th at 10:00 a.m., not Thursday, March 17th at 6:00 p.m. It is possible that other concerned neighbors received the wrong notice and are unaware of the hearing due to this clerical error. For that reason alone, this project should automatically be continued. Specifically, we oppose the project for the following reasons. There is no evidence of sufficient power to support the expansion. There is no evidence in the operations plan or the staff report to demonstrate sufficient PG&E power to operate the project. What is the existing PG&E service? And there is no details in the project materials that would indicate it's anything more than 100 amp service. Light pollution and noncompliance with the approved permit. Basically, why should we allow an existing irresponsible applicant to dramatically expand their mixed light cultivation?
Please try to summarize, Praj. I thought you were a consultant on this one, not just reading somebody's letter into the record, so please summarize, wrap it up.
You got it. So they, they oppose it due to the light pollution, due to the noise pollution, due to the inaccurate employee count, due to the low water use, and no calculations to support the actual harvest capabilities of their water system from rain collection. There was no biological report, it's incompatible with the neighborhood, and the general site cleanliness is a concern, impacts to the Kings Range Wilderness Tourism is a concern, public land setbacks a concern, the lack of road certification, no enrollment in the general order with the state water board, no site management plan in the package, and there are improvements within 30 feet of the property setback.
You're going to have to wrap it up.
Included with this letter, there are photos of the lights and the trash and the route through the property to the Kings Range National Forest Area. Thank you.
Thank you, Praj. Any other public that wishes to speak on this item? Nathan Madsen.
Hello, commissioners, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, and I apologize for the delay in my opportunity to pipe up here, but the comment letter that was received by the commission was extensive and received at the absolute last minute, and we would request that this project be continued to a date certain so that we can take the time to address those concerns with our client.
All right, thank you. Is there any other public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. So, is there, go ahead, Brian.
So, this is half commentary, half question, but if this were just, you know, a normal permit where we're taking, you know, pre-existing cultivation that hadn't gone through an approval process, you know, I might respond one way, but it seems like this is somebody who already has gone through the process, had a number of conditions of approval, and there's allegations that many of them have been violated. So it feels to me that further steps are needed to appropriately adjudicate this before it comes back to us to even consider an expansion. In fact, it sounds like there potentially another path of revocation. So I'm not sure what anyone else feels about that, but that's, that's my initial thoughts. Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any thoughts? Oh, Mike, go ahead.
I have to say exactly right, Brian, I have to agree with you wholeheartedly.
Okay, Thomas?
Many concerns, I actually share a lot of the concerns with all the commenters as far as Um, I actually share a lot of the concerns with, um, all the commenters as far as the calculations of water use, employee counts, especially I just read back through and it does say that they're going to hand water, so I, I have lots of concerns and then looking over this information. I don't wanna say the other word that was used by Commissioner Mitchell, but there's, there's some concerns and it would be, um, it would be very hard to other applicants that have jumped through hoops to, if this, if these allegations are substantiated, it would be very hard on those other applicants that are jumping through the hoops to try to do the best they can.
I agree also. I, I don't see a path to approval personally today.
So, does somebody wanna make a motion then to continue this, to let staff bring this back, or do we wanna...
I was just gonna, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I was actually just gonna ask the director, um, clearly this, this one needs to be continued. We would like to give your office sufficient time to investigate. When would you suggest that we continue it to?
I would suggest either April twenty-first or May fifth.
Okay. Is the first date sufficient?
April twenty-first.
Okay. Okay, well, I'd be happy to make a motion then that we continue this item to the April twenty-first meeting.
No, I'll second that.
All right. We have a, a motion and a second. Thomas, you have some discussion on that?
Just a quick question or clarification from staff. If these, um, allegations are substantiated, would there be a different type of recommendation when this project comes back?
Yes.
Go ahead, Brian.
And that could impact the original permits that they received as well? Or is... Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm just, this isn't really, this is more of a general comment, but it seems like tonight we've had project after project that just didn't seem like they were quite ready to come to the commission. I, I think that I'd ask that staff think these over before you bring them because there's a lot of other ones in the, you know, in line to, that would like to have theirs done and we just, we've continued, I think, three of, four of them tonight to dates. It just seems like they weren't ready to, to come to us, so...
Message received.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Trip, roll call, please.
Yes, Brian Mitchell. Noah Levy?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
And Alan Bondjo?
Yes, I think Mike...
And Mike Newman?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. It carries unanimous, so come back to us on April. Okay, well, we got through all of them. So now, we're gonna move on to public hearings, item G, and the Safe Parking, Safe Shelter Pilot Program and Shelter Crisis Ordinance. Take a staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, Chairman Bondjo and members of the commission. My name's Michael Richardson and I'm joined here with, um, tonight with Mary Melner and she's going to present a PowerPoint for you explaining what we're, uh, proposing with this new safe parking, um, emergency shelter ordinance. Mary, take it away, please.
Good evening, commissioners, commissioners and members of the public. Unfortunately, my camera is not working, but hopefully my screen share will work. So, do we, do we have my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hey.
Okay, great.
Go ahead.
Can you make it full? Oh, sorry, can you make it full screen? We're only seeing, um, we're seeing the screen, but with your surrounding PowerPoint.
Okay.
There you go.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
So, tonight, we are, uh, we wanna share our safe parking and safe shelter ordinance. This is part of our, um, twenty nineteen housing element work that we've been doing. The implement, this implementation measure commits us to adopting an ordinance or resolution that creates a safe parking pilot program, program longer, along with later implementation steps. One of the things we learned in examining best practices on this kind of program is that it's almost, that successful programs are almost a, almost always a coordinated effort among agencies, community organizations and neighbors. So that's the approach we took. The, um, program that we have developed was made in coordination with Department of Environmental, or Department of, uh, Health and Human Services, other agencies, uh, local, local service providers and experts in homeless services as well as the public. The impetus behind this whole thing is, um, the population of houseless people in Humboldt County. And this is measured by the, by annual point in time count. Last one was done in twenty nineteen. Um, so this map shows basically on the left, it's the count of people on the night of the point in time count. Those are people that were interviewed. On the right, we have an additional set of people that were not interviewed, but they were observed, um, dwelling in vehicles, RVs, tents or makeshift shelters. So what the point in time tells us is that about fourteen hundred people sleep in places that are not made for human habitation on any given night. About one of the, one-third of those are outside of city limits in unincorporated areas. And almost half sleep in cars, vans or makeshift shelters. So, a little bit about our program, our pilot program. I wanna introduce... So, I'm having a little problem with my slides here, sorry. So, the, there are two pilot types that we're introducing here. One is safe parking and one is safe shelter. I wanna make clear what those are. Safe parking accommodates vehicles, vans, RVs as determined by the service provider. Um, and just an aside, the provider is going to be a, a government agency, a nonprofit or a religious entity. Safe shelter, on the other hand, uses non-vehicle type shelters, which are individual cabins, tents, sheds, huts, and these would have to meet certain building, emergency housing building standards. Now, in addition to the two pilot types, in order to help and guide the providers who will be running these things, um, in coordination with DHHS, we've come up with three management plans. And what these are is different ways to run your, run the programs. And the reason there are three is because their, um, providers will have different amounts of resources, different staff. Some will be grant funded and obviously they'll have different locations. Some may be in very rural areas, some might be by urban areas. So just, I'll go into more detail about what those management plans are later on the bottom of your screen. They're called minimal requirements, the village model and the low man, low barrier management plan. So before going too much further, I wanted to just quickly go through some pictures, some images so that, um, to give an understanding of what these things look like in other places. This one's in Santa Barbara. This is a safe parking, minimal requirements model. The Santa Barbara operation has been going on for almost twenty years and when people want to know how to do what the best practices are, this is the, the organization they go to. And in fact, the Santa Barbara New Beginnings has written a best practices manual on how to do the safe parking. This is what the ones in Eugene look like. They're called rest stops. They're minimal requirements, which is overnight shelter. This one's been going on for quite a while, too. Here's an Arcata example from twenty twenty. This would qualify as a low barrier navigation center. Which I'll define when we get down to the management plans. And here's one in, um, Long Beach that also was a navigation center. The feature of a navigation center is that it has, um, sort of maximum services. There's caseworkers, there would be referrals, um, lots of onsite services, and these are for, um, they're basically service intensive versions of safe parking. Here's a picture of one in Ubah County. On the safe, safe shelter side. And then the third model is called the village model. This is very much like transitional housing, but, uh, not quite. It's more, it's an emergency shelter that's, takes on some of the aspects of transitional housing. So, we, state law has a fairly hefty presence in regulating emergency shelters. What we are allowed to regulate is this short list here. Basically, we can, uh, quantify the maximum number of beds, uh, sufficient parking, waiting in client intake areas, onsite, we can, um, require onsite management, the proximity to other shelters, length of stay and lighting and security. So... The general condition in this same housing, um, State Housing Law Act requires that any standards that we put in have to be objective and they have to encourage and facilitate the development of emergency shelters. And as an overlay to this, in a separate piece of legislation, the Housing Accountability Act, um, limits the reasons for which we can deny or make infeasible an emergency shelter. And that would require, there's a, a list again of reasons that you can deny a project there, that requires written find, written findings, certain written, specific written findings. So, um, this is actually my last slide. I seem to have missed a few. I, if you'll forgive me, I'm gonna go backwards a few pages and see if I can find the ones that I've lost. I'm not sure if they got out of order or what. There are a couple of other things I wanted to cover. You know, hmm, okay, sorry, late slideshow preparation. I'll just kind of ad lib here. We'll go to my fun slide and I'll just, um, add layer. So, one other thing I wanted to mention is where these are located. This is a question everybody asks. The program, the pilot program that we're presenting tonight does not include proposed sites, but rather it specifies the zones where safe parking and safe shelter are permitted. The pipe, safe parking, safe shelter pilot is a type of emergency shelter, so the zones where they're permitted are the same zones that where emergency shelter is permitted. And that would be the C one, two and three zones, commercial zones, light industrial, ML, multi-family zone. These are the five zones that have been in effect basically for the last ten years and no, and yet no, uh, emergency shelters have built, been built in that time. So clearly there are other barriers. Our proposed ordinance tries to add, proposes to add a couple of other old locations for these things. One is MU, mixed use, which will be kind of a minimal effect, but one other, we presented as an alternative in the ordinance, you'll notice, alternative to... It would be, alternative to involves allowing churches, existing churches to have, uh, one of these sites on their property outside of the zones named. So that'd be a small, a handful of other possible locations. But the one caveat that we put in the alternative is that the existing church must have a verified congregation of twenty persons. And that'll be something for yourselves and the board to consider, that alternative too. So, I'm gonna go back a little bit to the management plans and just kind of fill in. So, let me just give you a little more detail on the, what the three management plans do. The minimum, well, let me just say first in general that the cost and complexity of these plans is, increases from left to right on that, on this, um, table in the bottom of, of the slide. In other words, the lowest cost, simplest ones are the minimal requirements and the most complicated, most expensive are the low barrier. The reason for three plans is we wanna maximize the number of possible providers that can do these and also to reach the outlined areas of the county, which right now have no shelter coverage whatsoever. If you remember the map we looked at back a few slides, um, you'll notice that the, the population of houseless people is spread throughout the entire county. It's not all in the populated areas, but as of right now, there's only five, there are five shelters and only one of them is in the unincorporated area and that shelter is right next to the city limits of Arcata. So we have essentially no coverage, no shelter coverage in the, in most of the county. So that's a reason for three plants, to catch more people, to bring more people in. So minimal requirements model, let me just give you a little detail on that. This is an overnight only plan with minimal services. The cost is kept low by less staff because it's only open overnight hours. Regulation is a lot less than in other models. One thing I didn't mention is that besides the land use regulations, there are reams of other regulations from DHHS and other grant funding entities that have, that these shelters have to comply with. And those, the regulations themselves are actually a barrier to making these things. It makes it more expensive, you need more staff. So the idea of the minimal requirements is to reduce that burden so that there's a better possibility for these things to happen. What we're hoping is, for the minimal requirements, we're hoping that it can be a little easier to stand up than other ones. It should be portable to rural areas and it can be tailored to available resources and it would be suitable for small providers and conceivably somebody who has two to five space, parking spaces might be able to do this relatively easy. So the next in cost and complexity is the village model. We limited this one to fifteen vehicles maximum or, or fifteen individual shelters or vehicles. That again is the provider's choice. It can operate twenty-four hours with two staff onsite at all times. And, and in this model, it depends a lot, um, the participants are selected if they will, if they can participate in the running of the place and be a little more, um, community minded if they're able to, to follow that kind of agreement. And so, what we've allowed in this one is for others, for participants after training to actually be... And so what we've allowed in this one is for participants after training to actually be a part of the staff, a part of the oversight staff. And then the third model, low barrier model. This is arguably the best model and does the best job of providing services and transitioning people to permanent housing. It's kind of the preferred Cadillac model of shelters. The problem with it is there's a huge expense. There's a lot of regulation and a lot of staff involved. An example of this would be the Arcata House Partnership. And currently they're the only ones that have the resources and the staff to do one of these in Humboldt County. And obviously they can't cover everything. They can't cover all the 1,400 people. I don't think any one shelter is going to be big enough to do that, so. Yeah, and that's characteristics of a low barrier, our service intensive, a little more costly. There's requirements for data collection and monitoring of the participants. There's case, like more active case management of the people that are participating. And it also is required to accommodate pets partners and possessions of the participants and follows housing first harm reduction philosophy. Now those aspects actually are recommended for all the sites. They're one of the things that makes these shelters work, the allowance of pets, partners and certain possessions. But along with that obviously comes some site requirements and more money and more staff. So although they're recommended in the other two management plans, they're not required. Hopefully that gives you a little idea about what that, what management plans do. Then I want to go back finally to, sorry about the head spinning slide movement. There, we did find one correction that needs to be made. It's in the planning commission resolution after, it's on the same file as the staff report. And there's a date, an incorrect date there. It says that on page seven, it says the planning commission meeting was on February 3rd. And that's needs to be corrected to March 17th, just a note on that. And then a final note, we did get some comments from Department of Environmental Health. They are suggesting some language that, that helps them coordinate with, with our department on these things. They would like to be, have a referral, basically. And we're just going to, we recommend actually that we just take their language and write it into the code. And I do have, if, I don't know, should I bring that up, Mike, what do you think, or?
Yeah, well, we can just explain it on the mic, I think. What the Division of Environmental Health is suggesting is they are identifying what's involved with an approved sewage disposal system. They provide some background information and that'll be helpful for our checklists. It doesn't need to be in the ordinance. But then they do have actually a, an addition to the ordinance. And if I could, if you could stop sharing your screen, Mary, I'll pull up mine.
Sure.
And I can just briefly show the commission what the, what the Division of Environmental Health is suggesting we add to the, to the ordinance. It's under section 61.05.5 under the operating standards. They want to say, they want to add this additional standard that says if the site allows recreational vehicles, that no disposal of sewage from recreational vehicles is permitted at the site unless the provider documents the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board has approved the sewage disposal system for that use and details of the sewage disposal system are included in its management plan. And so that was just kind of a late addition that the Division of Environmental Health is recommending. And we're recommending that as well. So that's, that's the end of our presentation and we're open for questions, answering questions or comments and listening to what the public thinks.
All right, Brian, I saw your hand go up first.
The, the table that you showed several times with the different types of management plan, I was not able to follow your explanation for the bottom row. It said six months, six months, and I think manager's discretion. Could you repeat what that meant, please?
Sure. I can bring it up again, or I can just tell you. Six months is the, there's a maximum length of stay that we're allowed to set. And actually it's partially set in the emergency shelter definition in the state's definition of emergency shelter. So it's a six month stay for any particular participant in the, in the minimal requirements or the village model management plans. And in the low barrier management plan, because it's a different state created entity, that particular type of shelter does not have a six month limit. So because it has really intensive staff and sometimes they're dealing with things that take longer than six months to resolve, basically. So in that one, because, because it is so heavily regulated, there is no length of stay on there. The provider basically will decide how, what the length of stay is on that one. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right, Noah? Oh, I'm not sure. Go ahead, Peggy.
So I found that the point in time count is probably seriously undercounting, you know, the extent of the problem, especially in the rural areas. I just wanted to point that out. I know there's a homeless camp behind my house and it wasn't on there. But I have some issues that I wanted to bring up with churches because a lot of the churches are embedded within residential areas. And so I feel like if you're going to create one of these sites in a residential church area, that there should be adequate public notice and a public hearing and, and hear the concerns because I just think that that's important. And, and if they're going to be in retail areas, I don't know if that's a concern because I didn't really hear that. But I know in Eureka, there was a lot of discussion when they decided to put a site right in downtown Eureka. I think there should be public input and concern. You know, maybe the community totally supports a site next door to their homes or their retail business, but I think at least they need to be heard. I would like to see some sites that are exclusive for women and children who are vulnerable. There's often domestic violence. And people need emergency housing and, and, you know, like today, until they can find something more permanent. And I know in other communities, they've created sites that are exclusive to women and children that are fenced in and provide some security to those inhabitants. I also think that if you're going to be in a residential area, there should be some sort of curfew for entering the site unless it's, you know, a supervised emergency entry, you know, where someone comes in. But I don't think people should be able to come in all hours of the night and day if you're in a residential area. A lot of people that are in some of these sites do have substance abuse issues or other issues. And they may not respect the fact that they're in a residential area. So I think these are areas that need to be covered in an ordinance if they're not already in there. I did read through it quickly, but those are some of my concerns. I totally support providing sites for homeless. I've done a lot of studying on this myself and read some of the models that are in the Oregon Salem area and Seattle. And, and I think they can be effective, but I think they also have to blend in with the areas where they, they're staged.
I'd like to answer that through the chair, I think.
Go ahead.
So the church, the noticing hearing required for a church, that's something we can consider, I think. Also, the pit count being an undercount that pretty much everyone I talked to concurs on that. From having done the pit count, that particular pit count, I think also that it was an undercount. So as far as the retail areas, the way state law, there are two reasons why we did this the way we did. And one is that state law limits us on what we can, they require that we designate an area, a zone or zones where these things are principally permitted, which means without the public hearing and comment. However, you will notice if you look in the, each management plan requires that there be neighborhood outreach and a neighborhood engagement plan, ongoing neighborhood engagement. And just for an example, Arcata House Partnership has a, I think it's a, every six months, they have a meeting with any stakeholders that want to show up to hear concerns, problems. So that is baked in, rather than being baked in the ordinance, which the state regulations are not going to let us do specifically. And I'll show you why in a minute. We've actually baked a lot of those controls into the management plans. In other words, we ask that the provider lay out exactly what they're going to do, sign on the line, and then they're accountable for that management plan. And they can change it. I mean, they decide, but they have to do it, basically. But I think that is one way that could, that notice of the neighbors would be addressed in this thing. The specific, the specific women and children or family versions of these, again, that is going to be something that will be allowed in the management plans. In other words, if a provider said this particular shelter is going to be women and children only, they put that in their management plan and that's what it is. They, they set the specifics of how they are going to select their participants. The management plans also have a written agreement with each participant that has, you know, basically the rules set by the provider that they're accountable for. And then as to the idea of a curfew, this is an a concern on all these things, site access, who can come in and come out. Again, in the management plan, there are quiet hours. The site access is going to be basically set out by the provider. They'll say, here are the hours of operation, here's the quiet hours. These are the hours where people can come in and out. Here's who can come in and out. And there's onsite staff that's going to be accountable for keeping track of who comes in and out of the site. And again, that's baked into the management plan rather than in the ordinance for the, for the reason, the planning law reason that I showed. So hopefully that.
I just have a question about understanding the management. I would understand what a management plan is, but who, who do they submit this management plan to and who enforces it?
Management plan is on file with the planning. When they get their zoning clearance permit, they have to file as part of that, the plan is submitted. And it also has to be available in their outreach to, in a copy at the site so people can see it.
And so then the county then is the compliance officer for this?
It'll depend, it could be, depends on what the issue is. It could be county, it could be the sheriff.
Ultimately, it would be the county to enforce it. The zoning clearance certificate would be issued to an applicant. And if they're found not to be in compliance with their zoning clearance certificate, then they, they would be given the corrective actions that are needed to bring it into compliance. If they don't bring it into compliance, then there would be either a revocation process or some other enforcement process.
Because Arcata House Partnership is, this is what they do. And so we know that they're going to do a good job, but others may not be as professional or, you know, they provide social services. They have a full variety of program services that they provide. So they're the cream of the crop, but you know, others may not do as good a job. And so there needs to be an off ramp if they don't, especially when they're in residential areas. That's my concern more than anything else.
You're raising a really, really good point that we, we've struggled with and, and that it's appropriate for the commission to struggle with in terms of the fact that there are some limitations, as Ms. Milner mentioned, in terms of what the state allows us to regulate. So we're identifying areas where these could be permitted and they're required to be permitted with a ministerial permit. Means somebody comes in, says, look, I comply with the law. And so give me a zoning clearance certificate and then they're free to go. And, and, and so if, if you don't feel like there are sufficient restrictions in the area or if there's not sufficient performance criteria, those are things that really we, we should absolutely be talking about. And want to make sure that you understand the, the rub that we kind of have trying to operate and implement the state law. Because we can't just say no and we can't make it discretionary.
Go ahead, Noah, and then Mike.
Thanks. I have other comments, which I'm going to hold off until after we've heard public comment. But just on this discussion that we've just been having and the director's last comment, one of my questions was, I understand the balance that, you know, you're trying to enable this to be principally permitted as a ministerial matter. But would it be possible for this ordinance to include provisions that under certain circumstances or say in certain other zones that are not specified here, these activities could take place with a conditional use permit? Is that a mechanism that we could use?
Michael, I'm going to defer to you on this.
Yeah, and the answer is yes. The way that we've set up this particular ordinance is to identify an alternative for your planning commission, which would allow for for these, these types of facilities on existing church sites. And that would be as a principally permitted use. And I understand that you're concerned about that because a lot of these churches are in residential areas. And so you may feel that that's not appropriate. But there is an allowance through our zoning ordinance for any church site to expand their, their, their facilities. And that is, would typically be done in a residential zone through a conditional use permit or a special permit process. And so that is an allowance for an existing church. If they wanted to formally set up one of these sites, they could seek a special permit for, for one of these facilities on their site through the expansion of a non-conforming use on their property.
So Michael, could you explain limitations relative to state law and shelter crisis regulations? Can we require discretionary permits for those, apart from the church?
Yeah, we've, what the state law requires is that we identify sites where emergency shelters are principally permitted. No discretionary permit required. And that, the number of sites that we identify has to be sufficient in order to accommodate the need. And we believe that the commercial zones and the mixed use zones and the multifamily are three zone where they are principally permitted, meet the requirements of state law. There are other zone, other zones that would, with a conditional use permit, allow emergency shelters as well. And, and that's allowable through, under state law because we've already got enough sites that are allowed through a principally permitted structure. And, and so these other conditionally permitted allowances are kind of icing on the cake.
Mike, you've had.
Yes, thanks Chair. I have a couple of questions. I wanted to know from staff, what, a simplified version of what is the alternative one and alternative two? What, in simple words, is the difference between those two alternatives?
Yeah, I can quickly explain that. The alternative one is simply suggesting that if the planning commission so desires, they could recommend that the board of supervisors give themselves an allowance to, to extend the life of these zoning clearance certificates for these safe parking facilities. That, that alternative stands on its own, and it doesn't have any relation to alternative two. Alternative two sets up a, an allowance, and this gets to something that Peggy was talking about, Commissioner O'Neill, earlier. It sets up an allowance for these facilities to be allowed as principally permitted on, on sites with an existing church. And so these, these alternatives are not related to each other. The first one is just extension of those zoning clearance certificates. And then the second one would just deal with existing churches. And it would be an extension of somewhat, a, a, a large expansion of the potential sites that could be used for these facilities.
So that brings me to part B on that same question. Alternative one is, looks like it places a limit on the number of safe parking and safe shelter sites at 10?
No, that, I'm sorry, that, that limit is not associated with the alternative language. The alternative is intended to be framed by that box that occurs on page 23, and there's another one that also occurs in the inland ordinance. The ordinance on page 23 is the coastal version of the ordinance.
So there's a limit of 10 sites with this?
That's right. There's, there's a limit of 10 sites, and that's intended to be county-wide.
County-wide. And is that for only county-owned land or leased?
No, this would be, this would allow facilities on privately held land.
So it, it, the state of California allows that? Is that what you're saying?
In fact, they require it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Melanie, then Brian, Thomas.
Thank you. I'm looking for a little bit more information regarding the ability of operators to limit the people staying there to, for example, women and children. So would that be in compliance with state law? Would our operators be allowed to basically turn away certain people because they don't meet their, their roles? Because I, I agree with Commissioner O'Neill that we should have some that are available to women and children. And then my second question is on churches. It's remarkably easy to set up a church. And so when you say existing churches, those are churches that exist now as of, for example, this day, and not future churches? And does it include all of the kind of alternative churches that may exist in places that, you know, that aren't obviously churches, like people's homes?
That's, that's a great question through the chair. Would you like me to answer that, or would you like me to respond to?
Go ahead.
Okay. As far as the establishing a limit or a requirement that all of these facilities be sort of just a targeted population, we, we can't do that. What we can do is to be permissive and, and allow for the providers to pick and choose what types of subpopulations they would like to accommodate on their own particular site. And so some of them may wish to allow only women and children at their facilities, but we, we can't say in our ordinance that, that that would be, that only women in children facilities are allowed by this ordinance.
I have something to add there. It is kind of a complex issue, and it has to do with other regulations besides ours. And how that works is, for instance, the low-barrier type shelters are required. They have site selection, basically a legal scheme. And there are only certain reasons why you can select or deselect people. But it happens that it is allowable to have, to select families or women and children as one of the, it can't be, say, you can't disadvantage a particular group. But one of the allowed selection criteria is veteran status, women and children. And this is, this falls under the, the institutional code, WIC, I can't remember the name of it right now. But there, so some shelters, depending on their grant funding, anything grant with state grant funding has to follow that very strict plan. But on the other end of the spectrum, say churches would, they have kind of free rein to use whatever selection criteria they see fit. And this, this would be nonprofits, and presumably they would have nondiscriminatory practices. But that's kind of how it works. It varies with what your grant funding source is.
Thank you. And then regarding the churches, for example, there are some churches that are in our homes, basically, and some of them are on TPZ land, for example, or Agland. And so when you give us the alternative two, is that inclusive of those churches? And if yes, are there zoning limits that would still apply in that case? Or would any church anywhere be allowable?
The way we're setting it up in the alternative is to be fairly expansive and, and allow any church with a verified congregation of 20 persons to qualify to host one of these facilities.
So someone's church in their home and on TPZ land would be allowed?
The way it's currently structured, I believe that's true. That's a concern to the commission. It may be something we want to take a little bit more of a look at, because I think we're envisioning probably more of the church facility than you're using an appropriate definition of a church. And the church is the people, not necessarily the facility.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
A couple of points I'd like to make. Number one, there are fathers with children who are subject to domestic violence, both in same-sex couples or just mixed-sex couples, where the father and the children are escaping the abuse. So I would like the language to be a little more gender-inclusive if we go towards the escaping domestic violence route. In addition to that, I'm wondering if we have the opportunity to see a map, if we have a GIS guru here who can show us these, this list of principally permitted zones? Like, what does that look like on a map? If we put all the C1, C2, C3, mixed-use urban, mixed-use rural, and the industrial, can we see that, or?
Yeah, through the chair, if you like, I can bring up my screen.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is showing our web GIS, and the parcels that have a green shading are identified as parcels that, right now, principally permit emergency shelters.
Michael, why don't you describe where that's at?
And, and so this is in McKinleyville. This is the McKinleyville Town Center property. The front part of it is zoned commercial, and the back part of it is zoned multifamily. And so it qualifies right now as an emergency shelter site, and it could, under this new ordinance, be used for, for safe parking facilities. And so you'll see a lot of McKinleyville along the Central Avenue corridor is zoned commercial. And so there are many, many sites in McKinleyville that would accommodate that, use, allow these new facilities. There's also commercial zoning, basically in areas that have public water and sewer. Willow Creek is an exception. They don't have any sewer. They do have public water, but there are commercial zones in, in Willow Creek. And then Eureka, obviously, outside of Eureka, Redway, Garberville, there's a couple of sites in Weot, and along that avenue of the Giants is another place where you might see these developed.
Well, if I can just add a comment to that, you know, last time I looked, McKinleyville held approximately 65 to 70% of the available land available for low-income housing development. And I know they're trying to catch up with being able to provide services, but still, Eureka is the place where most of the Health and Human Services offices locate their, their services. And so I'm wondering, could we potentially place, within that limitation of 10, like by community, we're not going to end up with nine in McKinleyville and one in Southern Humboldt. I mean, not, not only is that potentially have significant impacts on that one community, but also, like we saw on the map, this problem is widespread. And so we need to make sure that there are opportunities throughout the county and not just solely in McKinleyville.
I agree. And I feel like, I don't know, I live in McKinleyville, maybe I have a conflict here, and I'm not against homeless housing. That's what I do for a living. But it looks like you're just going to pick on one area and say, hey, everybody, let's move out of Eureka, head to McKinleyville. And I don't feel like the services are there to support. So I think there should be sites all over the county and not so many in one area. And I don't know if the whole community of McKinleyville has looked at that map and agrees.
So this is for staff. Under alternative two, I see that there, existing church with a minimum verified congregation of 20 persons. I'm really curious of what that verification process is. Is it 20 persons that just signed up? Is it 20 persons that have been there for 12 months, at least 12 months? Or, and then also, what is the definition of existing? Because in the county, I've seen some, you know, places that were churches that, it would be really sad for someone to use that clause of 20 persons and then have, you know, devalue private landowners in residential neighborhoods.
Thanks, Michael. If I don't get this entirely right, please add in. But I think the very things that you're identifying as being concerned is what this is trying to address. And, and maybe this isn't the right mix of, of words quite yet, but the concern is, is that, you know, churches by mission have this, feel this obligation. So we don't want to regulate them out of doing something they feel called to do. On the other hand, we don't want people to take advantage of the title church and do something where, you know, maybe it would be a detriment to the community. And so what we're trying to grapple with is what is a functioning community of, of a church that would want to sponsor such a thing? And, and maybe this isn't the right definition of it, but that's really what we're, we're trying to grapple with.
I, I think if we just really understood what verification meant and what those terms existing meant, I think it would help get to a clear consensus. In my mind, I would, I would think that'd be something somewhere around like a year of 20 people or more congregating. I think that would be fair. That's just off the top of my head. But if we hone in on those definitions, I think we could, I would be in support of that.
All right. Let's try and get the public input and then come back. Remember those people? We've been going pretty long on this. So let's open this up for public comment and, and keep, we're going to hold it to the three minutes. Raise your hand, please. The first one is Tanya Horlick. Go ahead, Tanya. Star six.
Oh, thank you. I'm on Zoom. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you all for honoring our community by holding this discussion. I'm really impressed with the work of the county planning department. And I just have one question. I'm wondering why, I must have missed it, I'm sorry, it's a clarification question. Why is this limited to, did I hear 10 sites in the entire county? Because I asked this question because, like, if I was driving down a road, and the road is a public service for all entities that are crossing and traveling, we don't limit how many cars go down that road. And I don't understand if this is a public service to the community, why it would be limited to 10 sites across the county. And thank you very much for this time.
Thank you. You want to address that one, Director?
Perhaps you could take all the public comment.
I would, but there's no other hands up, so that's.
So one of the things that, in this conversation, I, I wanted to remind the commission of, first I'll answer the question directly, 10 is perhaps an arbitrary number. But this is also a pilot program for 18 months. It's really, let's see what can happen, let's see what the interest is, let's see whether or not this set of regulations work. And so it is intended to be kind of at a smaller scale, a manageable scale, to allow us to have this test. And then if we need to modify the regulations, create a better distribution, do something differently in the next iteration, it, it allows us to go in that direction.
All right. Thank you, Director. I see a couple more hands just came up. So 38, 37. Go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Janelle Aker. I, there's a lot to this. It's a big issue. Thank you for the, it's wonderful to hear so much interest. I also am concerned about the, the number of sites and the limited number of participants. You heard about how many homeless there are, and, you know, 10 sites by the number of occupants, does it even come close? I also want to address some of the concerns about having this here or having that there. I have, in my neighborhood, well, across the gully for me, is, for, for quite a while, we, my husband and I, we would hear this couple screaming and yelling at each other. And we were kind of wondering what was going on, what was going on. And then after a while, it only became her. And I think what was happening is that she was, she is more easily agitated, she did, and she yells and screams. But I think that they have gotten some help, and they're no longer yelling at each other. But every once in a while, we will hear her having a moment, and she is just screaming, yelling. It's hard to say what she's, you know, what she's saying. So that, you can't, and I can't go over and have her evicted from her house, because she is having an emotional issue, problem, and she needs to yell at a certain point and be calmed down. and be calmed down. So I want to, I, I just want you to kind of think and have sort of a heart for all these people that are out there on the street, um, and in the bushes and in your back, you know, in your field or whatever they are. And, um, not, and sort of kind of let go of that. I was at the sleeping site every morning that they were open in Eureka. A wide range of people were there. It wasn't limited to, you know, by gender, it wasn't limited by income, it wasn't limited by whether or not you had been at Betty Chins and then came there. It wasn't limited, um, in any way. It was just a place to, to sleep at that, you know? And this is so wonderful to open a place where people can actually, that's actually part of my problem. Some of these are just sleeping sites. And people need a place to live. And am I out of time? Sorry. And so I would encourage you to, to open up your mind and think about these in terms of places to live rather than these sleeping sites. I realize there's a lot of rules and regulations you need to deal with, but I think some of those can be worked around. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next caller is Sarah.
Hi.
Hi.
First, I want to start off by, um, thanking staff. I think, um, what's proposed is making steps in the right direction, and I really appreciate, um, how much time and thought was put into, um, all of the outreach to, um, community members working on this issue. And I just really appreciate all of the, the details and time that went into this proposal. I also want to say outright, I support, um, this proposal, uh, and I have a couple of comments related to it and how I think it could be improved. Generally, um, big picture, I, I think we should loosen restrictions on these type of operations whenever possible. Like, this is a critical need and we need to, um, make it possible for people to operate these sites. People need places to go and their needs are valid. Their needs are as valid as homeowners in residential neighborhoods. So with that, um, I think that I would, the duration should be extended, if possible, to at least two years. The permitting is going to take time and by the time an organization gets one of these sites off the ground, we're, it's going to be at least six months into this eighteenth month process. So, um, extending the time would be fantastic to allow, um, these programs a, a true chance to operate and, um, fix the bugs and prove themselves before we consider, um, canceling them or renewing them. If not that, I encourage you at a minimum to, um, adopt alternative one, allowing for the board supervisors to do the extension. Looking at applicability, I think it would be better to allow any site in the county that meets the specified requirements laid out. I think staff did a great job really honing in on what a site would need to provide these services, um, regardless of location. But barring, barring that, I think that adopting alternative two, um, which includes existing churches, um, and personally, if a church is a church, it doesn't really matter how many members it has. If they want to provide those services, they should be able to. I don't think we're going to see many cases of, of residential house in a TPZ zone providing these services. It's going to be facilities.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, um, the number of sites. I want to echo the previous commenters that ten sites is not a lot, particularly considering the need. If you look at like ten sites and I think it was fifteen to twenty, um, twenty spots in that, that is not even a fraction of the need in the county. And it doesn't really clarify, is it first come, first served? Is it ten application?
Your time's up. Your time's up, ma'am. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this topic? Desi Wade. Star six.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I've, I've spoken to the planning commission before about these ideas and I'm really very pleased and, um, grateful to all of the hard work that I know the planners have put into creating these ordinances and, and trying to come up with a framework that would allow what we've been advocating for, for almost ten years now. That's a long time. The last two speakers, I want to, I want to reiterate the need for having more flexibility in the timeframe. I have some, I, questions seriously about if you start with ten people and, or, or fifteen people, and people are going to, for sometimes just be, that place will be a touchstone for them to go on and find something that's better or more stable. These are stabilizing opportunities for people. Some people are going to take longer than others, but as one moves on, how do you incorporate another and then give them the time that they need as your time is, 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 you know, going away in the limitations? There needs to be more flexibility. If you really want to care for people, you have to take all these things into consideration. The other thing is, uh, in terms of only having ten sites, I have some concern about how is that going to happen for, um, providers? Are the sites going to be, how are they going to be determined or selected? Is it going to be first come, first served? Who comes up with the first ten? And if that's all one provider or just a couple of providers, is there going to be some opportunity there or some way of creating or allowing for the opportunity to be opened up for people to get their ducks in a row, to be able to get through the permitting process and, and all of that? I just, I'm very grateful. I'm very grateful that we're here and we're having this conversation because though we will only be able to do a hundred and fifty people in one site, in eighteen months, losing three people a month to the streets, we're going to lose eighty people. In the, this is critical and as the moratoriums end and more people become dislocated and because of climate refugees, all the things that we've talked so much about, we are going to be impacted in a way that we really need to really start thinking of how we move people, um, off the streets, give them opportunities because they need some choice. And we need to be able to be flexible enough to actually work together and collaborate to move people along into, uh, communities. And if we are not...
Thirty seconds.
We aren't going to be able to do that. I really want to just say thank you. Um, I know there's a lot of things to resolve. I would love the alternatives for being able to have churches be able to provide these and for people to have, you know, lots of alternatives, uh, as much as possible. So, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, commissioners. I know you have heart. I see it in you in the decisions that you make and the discussions that you have.
Okay, your time's up. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, now the hands are coming up. Seven, four, two, nine. Go ahead.
Good evening. This is Robie Tenorio. I'm also very grateful that something this important is before you. It sounds like there's details that need to be worked out, but we desperately need it. We need it very soon in Southern Humboldt. And thank you again for spending time on this tonight. And thank you to the staff for bringing this such an important issue forward. Good night.
Thank you. Uh, next caller is Tony Gerard. Okay. Can we do that easy enough? So you'll have to promote to a panelist when you're asked.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Tony Gerard. I am the outreach coordinator for the Church of the Joyful Healer in McKinleyville, and I appreciate the, again, like everyone has said, all the work that has gone into this. The church has been doing outreach to the unhoused and food insecure in McKinleyville for, um, almost six years. And I used to, uh, have a different heart when it came to unhoused people. I was very judgmental and, um, not in my backyard and, um, that is, I have changed, um, because of my faith and more importantly, my experience with, uh, building relationships with these folks that are out on the street. And I am in strong support, um, of these alternatives, of doing something different that has been done, um, in the county, um, relaxing the regulations, um, to make it easier to help the folks that, the providers are so desperately trying to help. I really appreciate the, the opportunity to, um, give input. And again, I just, I can't say strongly enough how, how much the Church of the Joyful Healer, uh, supports this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. We're at about nine, ten, so, okay, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one thing that came up in the, the written public testimony had to do with, um, whether or not the parking lots had to be paved or not. And if they were unpaved parking lots, what that would mean in terms of tribes being able to comment on the potential for, you know, sacred sites being in those, you know, unofficial unpaved parking areas? And if it's, if it's just sort of a, a non-discretionary permit, how would the tribes have the opportunity to comment and, and point out those potential, um, um, issues that come up? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thomas, you had your hand up as well. I don't, do you want to take that one, Director?
I can probably take a shot at it through the chair.
Uh, whichever. Go ahead, Mary.
Well, part of this whole thing is to, um, the providers are obligated to contact interested parties, which would be neighbors. And in the case, uh, I wonder if we could incorporate an informal travel consult in our neighborhood outreach plan as part of that.
What you would get is a tip of concurrence from each of the, the tribes if you're in their area.
Well, I, I think the question is, is, is that if there's no real ground disturbance going on, is, is there a need for concurrence? And normally, when we're going through a ministerial process, there's not a referral process. That's something that people would come in and demonstrate that they're in compliance and they would, uh, then be able to get the clearance. I, I think that that's something we're still struggling with even tonight. We got the comments from DEH or DHHS looking for a, a referral process. But the balance here is that if there's a referral process, it's just going to make it more complicated to issue these permits. And, and so if there's no ground disturbance and it's on a, a lot paved is clear, but if it's gravelled, there's no grading going on, there's no earth moving going on, I, I wonder, maybe we should have a discussion with the tribes before we get to a place where we're taking this forward for a final action. But I, I wonder if the tribes would want then to participate in that if, if there's no earth disturbance.
You would have to ask the tippos.
Right.
Especially, I mean, Eureka. I mean, there's a lot of places that, that you think, you wouldn't think that they're sacred, but they are.
Understood.
Go ahead, Thomas.
So, um, I heard a lot of comments of people questioning the ten, starting off ten, but I, I would really like to remind everyone, it's a pilot thing. So let's say it doesn't work out and in eighteen months we have to withdraw it. I think if there's only ten sites, let's make sure it works well so that way we aren't in potentially losing a bunch more. I also would assume it's an ordinance, so if we get twelve months down the road and it's working really good, it could probably be amended as well. But I don't know, that's, that's kind of where I'm at is, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of the ten and I'd like to see definitions around the church, that alternative two.
All right. Noah, you have a comment?
Okay, well, I, I guess I have a somewhat different view, but it is a view that is echoing what some of the public commenters said. My view is that, given that this is a pilot project, given that it is time limited to eighteen months, or even if we were to expand that to, to years, which I think would be reasonable, um, I, I think we ought to remove, or we ought to lower the barriers to entry as much as possible so that we could get more examples of this happening on the ground, even at the risk of some of them occurring in places or in ways that do cause some impacts or problems, um, so that we can learn from this experience and perhaps put more limitations in place later. I mean, I, I guess, to take three or four examples of limitations that I think are questionable, I mean, we've discussed the church thing already, but for my money, I, I would like to see any church as being an allowed site. And I think it's sort of weird and awkward to have the planning staff be verifying that the current congregation is twenty people or more. I just feel like if it's a church, let's let it be used. But, you know, conceivably allowing it in other zoning areas, um, I would at least like to have a discussion of whether there might be other zones that could be appropriate. Removing the limitation on only twenty sites because, well, the other, the other point is that each of these plans, each of these projects is going to have a management plan that will define the, 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 the project more precisely. So twenty sites may be a reasonable limit for many of these sites, but not necessarily all. So I just feel like, why have it be limited to twenty sites? And I mean individual sites within the site, not ten sites, um, in the whole county. And finally, the requirement that, uh, that it be not allowed for overnight, or, sorry, that it be limited to overnight only and not allowed for twenty-four hours seems problematic to me as well. And that was something that was reflected by some of the comments that I read. So in short, I guess what I'm saying is, I would really like us, for the purposes of this pilot prob, project, to lower the restrictions as much as possible, see what happens and see if we have to add in some of those restrictions afterwards. Thank you.
Go ahead, Melanie.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Levy. I, I agree with a lot of that in terms of collection of data. It's important to have a good interval where we can actually learn from the experience. I still would like to limit the churches to the zones that are currently listed, just to avoid, I mean, having them in places where we may not be able to access the site. You know, the, just, you know, wildlife reasons, uh, water quality, um, all of the same reasons that we talk about in terms of other projects in fact. And so, uh, I just want to add that. Thanks.
Any other thoughts?
I have one. I agree with just about everything that's been said. My only suggestion would be that we don't do it for as long as what's being asked, the eighteen months. I think we should do it for six months. That gets us through the winter, which is generally what the big concern is. And it will, we'll know if things are, need to be changed sooner. I think it, it, uh, if we let it go on too long, things, even if they're not working, are going to get established in certain areas or in certain places. And then we're going to be locked into them where I think if we do it for a shorter duration, we're going to find out if it works or it doesn't. If it works in that neighborhood, if it works in this one, um, if, if the program in general works. So I just, I think a shorter duration, for the first go around at least, um, would be better.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Chair. I, too, am in favor of this. I'm looking at, though, I like alternative one, which limits it to eighteen months, but with the discretion of the supervisors to extend it, um, for a length of time, seeing it going. When you put something for like only six months, it's hard to get funding and get that all set up, uh, is the problem on that, Alan. It's very hard for, because these are going to be managed sites and they're going to be limited to twenty at each site. Twenty vehicles, tents, sleeping cabins. With those three different management plans are, it's going to take a little setup. So, uh, we're not going to be seeing this, um, for just emergency shelters for winter. We're looking at doing this right now in the summertime. We're looking at doing this right now in the summertime, once it gets set up. And it would be good to go ahead and go with eighteen months. I believe in my mind, I think this has been vetted very well. A lot of input was put here. We'll give it a a shot, and I I would like alternative one with the limit of eighteen months unless it's extended.
Okay, any other thoughts?
If we did eighteen months, I mean, I've been presuming that it's eighteen months because we would get a data collection of twelve months, presuming that it would probably take six months to really see these sites developed. But I just have a question in terms of the timeline, I guess. If this were approved, could these be in place like tomorrow?
So, once the ordinance is effective, which will be thirty days after the Board of Supervisors' action, yeah, they could be in place within a week.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Brian.
I'm personally okay with the eighteen months. I still think that the tribal consultation issue needs to be addressed, because one of the tribes reached out to us expressing that as a concern. And I'd like to know what the others think. I think that's appropriate, especially in areas, you know, where there are sacred sites. In addition to that, I really think that the, whatever the cap is, be it ten, twenty, fifteen, that we have a maximum per community planning area, or a maximum per something, so that it's not concentrated in in just one or two communities.
Thomas?
So just for clarification, I guess I might be, I might have been looking at this differently. Alternative one, if we went with alternative one, that would not include any church sites. Is that correct or incorrect? They're unrelated? Okay. Okay. So if we approved one, it would, like, church sites wouldn't be able, unless they went to Okay.
All right. Well?
I just wanted to clarify something I said earlier. I'm not opposed to them being in churches. I just feel that if you're in a residential area, there should be some outreach to your neighbors to make sure everyone's good with this, because if it springs up tomorrow, and you you might have had some valid input that you want to provide, and I think as a homeowner, you should have that right to be able to have that input into any type of new facility that's coming to town that wasn't in the zone before.
I share your concerns.
I personally believe that if we look at the management plans, there is that outreach there. If we could have Michael or Mary in on that.
Yes, actually, I can answer that. Yeah, it's a requirement of the management plan that outreach in the neighborhood is done. So there is a different process. It's made by the provider. There's, the sharing of the management plan is one. The bringing in the local authorities, like the sheriff has to be involved and know what's happening. So, and a chance for the neighbors to weigh in on their concerns. So all of those are part of the management plans.
And I was looking at the low barrier model first, I guess. That's page fifty-two. Are the other ones in here, I was just able to open that up right there.
I believe that permission is in all of them. All three management plans.
Yeah, that's right. And one thing that Mary said earlier that I want to circle back to is she indicated that an appropriate approach to involving tribes could be as part of that outreach program, that the provider takes steps to outreach to the to the applicable tribes, rather than the the planning department establishing a referral to the tribes, and that that would shorten the timeframe and minimize the bureaucracy involved with that sort of a referral.
I think that's an option, but I think that the county needs to make sure that those management plans adhere to all these rules and that they're, you know, that the outreach was sufficient. So I don't know how you do that, but to just say, I mean, I can write a plan. I can write all kinds of plans, and that doesn't mean every, everything is okay. So someone, and I'm not saying that people are not reputable, or that they would be dishonest, or not, they just may not know how to go about doing it, because you're gonna be dealing with different groups. Some groups are gonna be better at it than others. Someone has to make sure that it happens, and that's where the county, I think, would come in.
If I could, through the chair, put a comment on that. It seems to me the neighbors in would, you know, have the ultimate say if they complain, then.
I think, I think, Mary, if I could, the thing that's being articulated or as a concern is that if they reach out to the neighbors, and even the neighbors are upset, there's no teeth to say that some change has to be made. And so I I think the struggle here is, is there an ability to develop a set of regulations whereby there is the consultation with the neighborhood, that there is some kind of negotiation process, or some kind of process whereby people feel like their voice and their concerns are at least heard. And and I, if if I capture the concern correctly, I I think that's what I'm hearing that you're looking for, is is that it be more than a token effort.
Well, we saw that at the roundabout in Arcata. People feel like they weren't heard, and and they came back to the county, and then you have to deal with it later. So if we do it right from the beginning, then we won't have that problem.
And just, and just to add, I know you you said you don't want a referral process, but the disposal of black water, you know, really seems like it has to have some agency who deals with that regularly have either very specific rules that can be followed, or the ability to sign off. That that just seems like common sense to me.
Noah?
I wanted to ask about, and hopefully get a little clarity about one one concern that I mentioned, which was the prohibition against twenty-four hour access. But I I actually, I want to go back to to Mary's presentation, because I believe in her presentation, she showed the three models being minimum requirements, village model, or low barrier, had, I I think, if I recall correctly, under village model and low barrier, it said twenty-four hours could be allowed if the management plan permitted it, and it was only minimum requirements that said overnight access only. So first of all, is, am I, is that correct? Okay. And I mean, I guess my general point, or my question is, why why not allow the duration of time, as in overnight or twenty-four hour access, be determined on a case-by-case basis, according to the site, the capacity of the operator, and so forth? Why why limit certain categories of these sites to being overnight only? Can you explain the the reasons for that? Because maybe there is a reason that I'm not understanding. But it was something that, again, I I got from a couple of the comments. People were saying these need to not be limited to overnight only. So I would appreciate some clarity.
Yeah, I can take that through the chair. The requirement for overnight only is really to accommodate the need to eliminate for for some, for a provider who has limited funds and an appropriate site. In other words, it'll take less staffing, it will be less expensive. That's really the only reason for.
But if if I may jump in, why why make that a requirement at the ordinance? Why not allow them to limit it to overnight only if they should prefer, but allow them to make it twenty-four hours if they do have the capacity and wish to do so? We wouldn't be requiring that each of these have twenty-four hour access if we just allowed them to do that in their management plan if they wish to. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And actually, there is no reason that couldn't be in there. It'd be, it could be, could be a choice. There's no requirement. There's no logical reason why, other than the cost, that it couldn't be the choice of the provider.
Okay, thanks for that response.
All right.
Chair, go ahead. Mary, would you explain how the different options work? I mean, isn't it also within the ordinance that somebody could come up with their own operations plan and submit that? So just what Commissioner Levy is is asking could be something that somebody proposes?
Yes. In fact, the way we built the management plans, for clarity and ease for the providers, we included everything that's required by the ordinance. And in addition, we have best practices with choices, so that there are multiple places in there where, you know, there's choice A, B, and C, or other. And there's nothing, there's no legal reason why a provider can't scrap our plans, honestly, and come up with their own, as long as it covers our, as long as they have our ordinance covered. The thought is, because we're a rural community, and that kind of thing only happens when you have kind of a lot of resources, a lot of staff resources, where the management plans are basically a frame, a pre-made framework to make it easier for people, but they're not a legal document that can't be varied from. Does that answer your question?
Sure, yeah. I I guess I just want to say, my overarching concern is that we try to allow the maximum flexibility in the ordinance for different types of plans to come forward according to the individual needs and capacities of of the project applicants. Thanks.
Go ahead, Mike.
Well, I would think that the overnight versus twenty-four, you know, seven time, means that they've got to have things more in place. They've got to have sanitation, because people will be staying there the whole time, as opposed to the low barrier, minimal, just getting in, and having management during that overnight stay makes it less expensive to start off. I would see that there could be a possibility of expanding once that kind of gets started with possibly one of the providers, that hey, they then see it's it's working, and they're doing good, and maybe they've got some more money coming in to to do that more, and they could then advance their management model with more things to have people on site than twenty-four seven.
You also might have other uses during the day for that parking lot.
And that could be, yeah, that other side.
It doesn't jive with, you know, at night, it doesn't really matter.
I I think the clarification Commissioner Levy was seeking was just that those were suggested models and not hard and fast guidelines or regulations associated with each model.
That would be my preference. Yeah, thanks.
All right. Any other questions, or somebody got a thought on making a motion on this? We're at nine thirty-five, so.
I'll make the motion. I'd like to make the motion to make the, all the, to make all the required findings and find that proposed ordinances are exempt from CEQA. Recommend the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors adopt the Safe Parking, Safe Shelter Pilot Ordinances and Attachments Two and Three of the inland and coastal areas. Reaffirm and continue by resolution the Declaration of a Shelter Crisis in Humboldt County, and C, adopt the Shelter Crisis Ordinance and Attachment Four for the unincorporated county pursuant to Government Code Section eighty-six, nine eight point four, with the addition of the, is it the Blackwater Amendment that was brought forth here? And I would choose to have alternative one with that eighteen month sunset that is automatic, but could be extended.
There were other thoughts that didn't get incorporated into that motion.
I was just gonna ask specifically about alternative two, since we've had a discussion of that. Are you deliberately omitting that, that alternative? That's the one that would allow for churches of twenty people or more to do it.
I would be okay with that if the zoning was limited to the same zones that all of the other ones are limited to. So the C-one, C-two, C-three light industrial multifamily mixed use.
Isn't that right in alternative two?
I I think if if it was limited to those zones, those churches were, would already be eligible, is my understanding. This is, this is a way to expand it. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this would expand it to churches in other zones. And I personally support that. I don't know that everybody else does, but I'd like to see that included.
I'm I'm just wondering from staff, how can we make sure that these are evenly distributed and don't impact certain communities that already bear a lot of the low-income housing and don't have the services to provide those residents?
Currently, this is simply to encourage these to occur. There's no limitations. And if the commission wanted to see the more evenly distributed part of the recommendation, part of the motion would be to include a limitation per community plan area or per community, or something like that.
Would the maker of the motion be amenable to something like that?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
Could we limit the churches so, such that they're, they wouldn't be allowable in TPZ and possibly PRIMEAG?
That that's reasonable as well.
But to be clear, you are allowing them in residential neighborhoods.
Were you going to require any kind of community input if it's in a residential area?
I believe that's part of the management plans already in all of this.
But the management plan is being written by the provider, so who's providing that oversight to ensure that it happens? We have people all the time coming in here going, I just found out this is happening, or no one's really listening to what I've got to say. And if you're the provider that's, you know, responsible, you may or may not carry out that responsibility in a way that the county does, or at least could provide oversight over. So I just, I'm not saying that they shouldn't do it. I'm just saying, how do we ensure that it's done properly?
Yeah, maybe if they were even just posted on the county website or something like that, so people would be aware of them.
Thomas has been waiting.
So I'm I'm stuck on this church one. It's, I'm just really confused by where we're at right now. It sounds like the motion on the table is to, in those right zonings, you would, it would allow at churches. Is that correct or incorrect?
Just to be clear, I think in those specified zonings, churches are just like any other nonprofit or government site. So it's, they're eligible to do it within those specified zonings, and the alternative two was about whether we allow churches to do it in other zones, at least some other zones.
Okay.
But that's not part of the motion, I don't think.
No, I understand that part, so I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around it.
Excluding TPZ and PRIMEAG are now part of it.
I did hear that. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
So just to be clear, we're, alternative one, yes. Alternative two, currently, no for an eighteen-month pilot program with limitations per community plan area. Is that correct? I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. So, oh, Director?
I apologize. Could I get clarification?
Could I get clarification? So, alternative two is not included or alternative two is included with limitations?
I heard it isn't.
It's included with limitations excluding TPZ and PRIMAG.
I, I don't think that's what Mike said.
Alternative one...
I mean, I'd be in favor of that, but, but the motion on the table excludes the whole church thing if I'm not mistaken.
The extra.
Right, right. The, so...
CN, CG, ML.
But you said when we, Noah and I, or Commissioner Levy and I brought it up, that you would be okay with that as the maker of the motion to include alternative two if we excluded TPZ and PRIMAG from that?
And CN and CG and ML are which zones exactly, Director?
Commercial, industrial.
Yes, I would go with then adding that in, alternative two then instead of one because that's only difference.
Well, alternative one you can leave in independently of alternative two.
Okay.
In.
With a limitation on TPZ.
With a limitation, no TPZ, no...
And PRIMAG.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I will withdraw my second for the time being. Okay. Do we, does anybody else want to second the motion?
I'll second it.
All right, Thomas, discussion?
Verification and definition of existing, if that, if staff could, that, those are my hangups on supporting that, what verification is. And I mean, I think that could be at staff's discretion, but they, it would be unfortunate for something that hasn't been utilized as a place of worship to pop up, that's legally been a place of worship, but all of a sudden they have twenty members as of yesterday and that's what I'd like to see not happen.
Well, could we set the date to today, existing as of today?
You could.
Existing as of today and has been using it with twenty members for the last twelve months, is that...
Or just twenty members of that congregation as of today's date?
I'd be supportive of that.
Yeah. We could do that. Add that in to the motion. As the definition.
Okay.
I just want to state for the record, I, I'm not going to be able to support the motion. I very much am sympathetic and want to have a plan that works for our community. And I'm just, want to echo Commissioner O'Neill's concerns that having the folks that are setting this up be the ones that are responsible for checking in with the neighborhood, checking in with the tribes and checking to make sure it's all followed without some other process makes me concerned to allow it to be essentially in any zone except for the two that you excluded. And so, that's, that's my hesitation and if we could work around that, I'd love to join in because this is something I'm passionate about.
I think, yeah, I share your concerns, Commissioner Mitchell. And I think that the, the fact that it's a pilot is, you know, makes me feel a lot more comfortable about it.
If there could be some sort of sounding board or, so Commissioner Mitchell, you're talking about having some sort of emphasis about the reach out on the management plan and how to follow that up with?
Well, like the Director said, they might reach out, but there's no teeth to, if the whole community says, no, this isn't a good place for XYZ, it floods, we already have a problem with crime, you know, these cars that are parking here might get broken into, the people might be assaulted, like, there's all sorts of areas I can think of in McKinneyville already that I don't think that a church would be appropriate in a residential area. And we won't be hearing the neighborhood's concerns. We're delegating, you know, the authority to others to respond, respect, and reflect that in their finished plans. And I, I just don't have the confidence that the community will be listened to.
Well, these would be churches existing as of today, right? Yeah.
Can you, I mean, I'm, I'm sympathetic to what you're saying, Commissioner Mitchell. Is there, is there a way of further constraining the allowance that alternative two would give these churches that you can think of that would, that would, you know, meet that concern, that would assuage that?
Nothing's come up yet. I've been searching and asking, but it hasn't yet.
Okay.
I'm going to take a wild run at something here that may or may not be appropriate, but one of the things we did with the cannabis ordinance two-point-O is that we identified that if there was no opposition to the ministerial approval of cultivation site within a community plan area, that it could be done through just a simple special permit. And the reason for the special permit is that then that verified whether or not anybody had any concern. What if the management plan had to come in with more or less some kind of acknowledgement, consent from the neighbors saying, yep, we're, we're good with this? And, and so, if it's in a residential area and the neighborhood's supportive of it, then it could be allowed. It gives the neighborhood a voice, there's accountability, there's a time to look at it.
So, if the neighbors are opposed, then would there be a way for them to appeal for a conditional use permit or some way that it could still be allowed to happen, but we would have a voice in the conditions and making sure that the community's needs were met?
I think based upon what I heard earlier, yes, we could go down that path.
I could support that plan.
Okay, yeah, because I was actually going to suggest something much simpler, which is that we could conceivably allow it in these churches in other zones with a CUP or special permit only. And that, that's a, maybe a simpler way...
That's a simpler way.
Of getting, ensuring that it would have those safeguards, so...
That would totally work.
Okay. Okay, well, I'd be okay with that.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure.
So... I'm with you.
Okay. Sure.
All right. So, any more discussion on this? You clear, Director, on, okay? With Trip, go ahead and ask the question.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Alan Bonjo?
Yes.
Melanie McAlver?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. All right, well, we didn't get to everything on our agenda tonight. We still had the issues of planning commissioner seating and review of the map showing cannabis cultivation sites. And I would ask if it's okay with the Director that we're already at nine fifty, that we agendize this for the next meeting, but put it at the very beginning. And I don't think it's going to take that long and we'll get through it. And is that okay with everybody else?
Yes.
All right. Anything, anybody else wants to bring up before we adjourn?
This is the way you talk, you have to do it.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.